Welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor and Council meeting for Monday, January 13th, 2025. It's weird you say 2025, but it's nice to see everybody. With that, please join us in a moment of
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we start with the consent agenda, I didn't want to make one announcement because I know that I have all of your attention right this moment. Once we talk finance and we do all kinds of fun stuff, your eyes may start to blaze over. So this is my first meeting back for, well, I don't know why I went to the hat. Yeah. Thanks Vice President Burrell for covering for me while I took care of the birth of our new son Benjamin. I want to thank everybody for reaching out, checking on us, the cards, the, all the things that all of you have done. It goes a long way and I greatly appreciate that. But that's not my comment. My comment is, we have had our town crews out working long hours for multiple events since I've, since I've been out. With that, I think that we all owe them a round of applause for the hard work they have done. But before we do that, I want to tell you the work that they've done. We had power, power lines fall down, everybody Atlantic General. Tim's crews were out well into the evening. We had some other departments that were there helping out, but they got the power restored and isolated first and then restored fully, working well into the evening when it was very, very cold. Additionally, we've had two snowstorms with that. Folks from Police Department, Electric, Water Resources, and Public Works have been out and about making sure that if you drive around in certain spots downtown, it really doesn't even look like a snowstorm's hit, but so that goes a long way. Folks are being able to get back out and get to, get to work and get to our businesses and things of that nature, doctor's appointments, all those things. So without the hard work of our town crews, in addition to the crews that I've mentioned that we've had, whether it's administration, economic development, Mayor's Office, Finance, whoever it is, supporting and helping make sure that messaging gets out and making sure that we're able to move on some of the financial things that we have to do in an event like that. So a huge round of applause for all of our Burrell and staff for helping get that. Thank you so much. Now we'll get on to the consent agenda if you don't mind, and that's the approval of the minutes of the regular session, the closed session that we have in the mat.
Motion to approve.
So a motion by Councilmember Warrens.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the consent agenda is approved unanimously with all councilmembers present. Up next is Agenda Item 2A with the celebration of Paul Miller. So Paul received his, what was this? This was in December, right? And he officially graduated, but then we wait for the paperwork to come in and the certificate.
He actually graduated in September.
Wasn't? December was PD. I'm sorry. I got you mixed up. I'm sorry. I had you mixed up with the Police Department graduation for a moment. But Paul's been with us for a while now and moved through the lineman training program, so we're here to celebrate his accomplishment tonight. And I think I see some other faces from Electric as well, so Paul, come on up. We're going to go pick him. I'm sorry, I had you graduating with the Police Department.
We'll take October's.
It was October. And it was over at the Chalk Tank Electric building right here off of Wallston and Switch over by Warburg. So Paul, if you want, just talk for a moment about the training that you went through and then we'll let Tim talk about all the awesome work that you now get to do.
Sure. Basically, the training program builds you from ground up. So it starts you as a ground hand, groundman, and then you baby step crawl, walk, run. And you go from basically hand line, make sure that the lineman you're working for has the material they need when they need it, and learning, watching from them, asking the correct questions at the correct time, not when they're need to focus on what they're doing. But, and then you transition into doing secondary work, basically their household stuff. So as it comes into your power meter and you turn the lights on, great. You turn the lights on, how did they turn on? What's happened? What's going on? What's feeding this thing? What's transferring? And then how is it going from, like backwards planning, from your house to the system, to the circuit? And if there's a break and there's an outage, where is it broken? How do we fix it? What do I look for? Different troubleshooting steps. And then you graduate from that into the primary side of the house, the big boy voltage, which here in the Berlin, we run 14,400 volts on the primary side. And even with all the PPE, the rubber goods, when you grab hold of that wire the first time, it makes you think. Even with all that stuff, it vibrates. You want to think it does, but mine is like, whoa, all right, yeah, she's there. She's in there. Yes, indeed.
So it's true when Alan says that linemen require material.
You can say that.
I can say that.
But, no, it's, it's definitely a job where you never stop learning. And that's one of the things I certainly appreciate about this field is I, the instructors and the people that have taught myself throughout the four years of this program, they said if you ever stop learning or if you ever stop the desire to learn, to get out of the field because you become dangerous at that point. And I certainly agree with that because there's, you never know everything. There's always something different, but whether it be this circuit here in the town of Berlin or somewhere else, if we get municipal aid out towards Chalk Tanks Ground, they might do things a bit different, which I certainly expect. And it'd be interesting to learn their ways or continue to learn here in the town of Berlin.
Now, as Paul, when we deployed down to Florida, Paul wasn't with us, was he? So he had just missed that probably by a couple of years, not a month ago. So we do have that mutual aid agreement, as you know, it's always nice to plug to the public business. But we do have the ability to help one another through AMP, American Municipal Power. And it's not uncommon for our folks to go and help others throughout the state or even in other states. So the work that you do here, we can't thank you enough. The training that you've received is, is really good because we want to keep you safe. We want you to know what you're doing. We want you to feel confident and first and foremost, and then also to continue to start helping the Electric Department with Alan's goals of constantly staying safe and all those things. We appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Tim?
I'd just like to go into Paul's story a little bit. I actually met Paul, I met Paul back in, it would have been back in 2022. I would say somewhere in April, maybe back in there. He actually worked for the town of Thurmont, Maryland. That's where I originally met him. And then we had a job opening and he actually applied for our job and he was hired. He started with the town of Berlin on July 18th, 2022. He started school, which was lineman training apprenticeship program. He actually started in step three. There's eight steps to the program, but he was kind of grandfathered for step one and two because he already had experience with the town of Thurmont. So he started in school in August, 2022, and then he graduated from step eight, which is the top of the tier. He graduated actually in October of '24. But there's two different groups. There's the Northwest Lineman College. That's the curriculum that we use for our lineman training program, but it's administered through the Virginia Delaware and Maryland Association. So he's going to be receiving actually two certificates tonight, and then he's going to be receiving a coin. The first certificate he's going to receive is this one. It's from the Virginia, Maryland Delaware Association. It's, he has successfully completed the journey in lineman program and he completed that on October 11th, 2024.
Okay.
I'm busy.
Is there, sir?
I, I was busy. I get the honors.
Tim, get in here too.
I'd be standing behind that which wouldn't see.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Unless I come down, so somebody get a haircut.
Me? Yeah, I know. I've had, someone just said, some of you probably couldn't hear, that I didn't get the haircut memo. One, they're both bald, but two, I'm more shaggy than I typically am. And that's probably Benjamin's fault, but I do, I do need to get it apart, so call me out.
No, no, no. You want a lines and special when you get.
This certificate that he's receiving here is from.
You can tell when I get shocked.
More dangerous where hair you have, right?
This certificate is from the Northwest Lineman College. This is the curriculum that every student uses that goes to lineman school. Paul is actually the second employee with the town of Berlin to successfully complete the entire program.
Caleb and Paul.
Caleb Hunter was the first and Paul Miller is the second. And this one based is Northwest Lineman College Power Delivery Program. Paul Miller Line Worker Certification Program has successfully passed the program dated September 30th, 2024.
Okay. Hold it up.
It's so dark right there. Can you just give a little?
Yeah, Tim, we need a light.
Can I have one?
There we go. All right. It's really dark.
Last one here is a, it's a coin of excellence. It actually comes from the Northwest Lineman College. He also received this.
Awesome. I don't know how we're going to all get our hands on this.
He closes.
I'm just like, each of you put a point.
I'm going to just count really close because I.
It's okay. I'm holding Paul's hand right now.
Shoot.
So they'll put this on the bar for 10 seconds.
Yes. And if somebody else doesn't have one, then you.
They might.
Then also in March of this, this year, 2025, Paul will receive his certificate of completion from the State of Maryland. So State of Maryland, actually, we became a state sponsor of the lineman training program and he will also receive a certificate from the state. And that'll be in March.
We're proud of you all and we're proud of the work that you and everybody do at the Electric Department, Tim, because without you bringing this to the Mayor and Council's attention several years ago, we would not have this type of program, which really is nice for you, for Caleb, and for the, I think we've got, who else is in there?
Jacob.
And Charles is in there as well?
He's in the.
Charles.
Yep. He's going for step five this month. David, David, absolutely.
For metering.
Metering.
That's awesome. So I want to make sure everybody hears that. David Davis with Electric for metering. Charles and Jake, all are in training programs as well.
That's great.
Awesome topic.
Good job. Thank you, Paul.
That's my first chance.
Appreciate the work.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, though.
I feel like his excitement is like, I'm going to go to line.
I'm good until I feel the vibration, then I need to get back on the ground.
Good job, Paul.
All right, let's see. Agenda item 2B is the draft FY '24 audit, and our folks from PKS are here with us this evening. So thank you all for coming. You're one short. Leslie, you have one.
Leslie, you're part, partially retired.
Okay, all right. Well, tell Leslie happy partial retirement.
She's still, she's still works now, now led, but part-time.
Okay, we know each other, but just introduce yourselves to the record, please.
I'm Alyssa Ravel, the manager on the audit.
And good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mike Player, part of the town of Berlin Audit.
Okay. Our purpose this evening is to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024.
Of course, mention some of the key financial highlights and then answer any questions you might have for us this evening. If there's any, obviously, if there's any follow-up questions such as me, let a listener or myself know and we'll get back to you right away after this thing. I want to begin with the audit reports. The first report in the, in the bound financial statements is the audit report is on pages one through four, I'm sorry, one through three. And basically, this, our audit opinion, which is probably the most important paragraph of that three-page report, is on page one, is at, is at the beginning of the report. And I'm happy to state that our opinion on the town of Berlin's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2024 is, is unmodified opinion. This is often referred to as a clean opinion, and basically the highest level of assurance that we can provide at all. Basically, the, the financial statements also, the remainder of the audit report covers management's responsibilities for the presentation of the financial statements, and our responsibility as auditors is to gather evidence, perform a lot of procedures, and determine that financial statements are free of any material misstatement and are recorded with John Except for the county principals. So that's the first report that's in your package. In addition to an audit, and of course, the Burrell and Audience Council, it requires us to report on the town's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. And that report is actually on pages 59 and 60 of your bound financial statements. I will mention that unlike the audit report, it's not an opinion, but rather, we report any findings or deficiencies in internal controls or compliance issues based on our audit testing. And once again, I'm happy to report that we did not identify any control issues or have any non-compliance with laws, regulations, or grant agreements based on our testing. And finally, there is one other report in the financial statements, and I don't refer to the page of that, but it's in the back of the report, and that's dealing with any time there's federal expenditures who exceed $750,000, there needs to be a separate audit just from the federal grants themselves. And here again, I would say that we did not have any findings or any issues related to the federal grants. So that's basically a summary of all the reports, all clean opinions, if you will, in that case, and nothing related to reports as far as findings or issues that we had. So with that, I'll turn it over to, let us up together, some of the financial highlights we did.
So first, we're going to take a look at your general fund. You'll see the, on the screen is a condensed version of your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. You'll see that for the year ended 2024, you have increased in your fund balance of just over $2 million, which is pretty consistent with 2023. The total revenues for 2024 were about $9.6 million, and then total expenditures for the year for the general fund were about $7.6 million. Some budget notations for 2024, the budgeted revenues were favorable compared to the actual, so that the revenues were over budgeted by $284,000. And then your expenditures were also favorable compared to your budget of about $6.2 million. And this is just the timing of when capital expenditures have occurred. So you budgeted for a lot more capital expenditures in fiscal year 2024 that probably won't actually occur for 2025. So it's just a timing thing that will probably figure out next year. And then you also had about $2.8 million budgeted for proceeds for long-term debt, which the actual draws have not started, did not start until the, their beginning of fiscal year 2025. So you'll see those coming in next year for this current year. Then next slide is, is a summary of your general fund fund balance. So your fund balance is the difference between your assets and your liabilities, and this is a key financial measure of your financial health. And the GSOA recommends that the, that a town has at least two months of fund balance for operating expenses. And for fiscal year 2024, the unrestricted, which is consisted of your committed, assigned, and unassigned, is about $10.6 million, which is about 16.9 months of operating expenses. And then your undersigned only of about $4.8 million is about 7.8 months of operating expenses. So the town's fund balance is a, is in a healthy division at the end of the year. And the total fund balance for the year was about $12 million.
I want to pause there just for a moment. I say this every year, but I always like saying this because the work that's gone into it by this Mayor and Council has come a long way. One, the establishment of those funds that secure the town's financial position. Two, making sure that we're capable of at least trying to weather a storm if it does come fiscally. We are much more prepared than we have been in years past.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think the next slide kind of shows victorily what you're talking about there. You can see 2019, it was pretty low balance, especially the unsigned portion. So you can see graphically that it's, it's increased every year since then. So that's very good.
We're going to do some more work after this.
Yes, so I just can see here all this, all this graph that says that your fund balance has consistently increased over the last six years. It's the highest level it has been since 2019. The next is, we'll just do a brief overview of your general fund revenues and where your money comes from. So for the year ended 2024, your total revenues were about $9.6 million. Your largest source of revenue is your property taxes of about 50, which brings about 15, or 50% of your general fund revenues, pretty consistent with the prior year. And then your other significant sources of revenue are your grant revenues of about $1.8 million and your service charges from your enterprise funds of about $972,000. Your total revenue compared to last year increased by about $920,000 for the general fund.
So once again, I'm not going to do this every time, but this does coincide with the last point with the fact that 50% of our revenues come from property taxes. When you look at other government entities, counties, state, and others, there are other funding mechanisms. Our predominant driver of revenue is property taxes. With that, there is the capability of fluctuations, which is in part why we also have those reserves that we've talked about. So thank you.
The next high chart you'll see is your general fund expenditures. So for the year 2024, you had total expenditures about $7.6 million. That was an increase of about $984,000 compared to last year. Your largest expenditure is your public safety, which is also consistent with the prior year, makes up about 39% of your total expenditures. The next ties is your general government, which is your admin, which is about 23% of your total expenditures, and then your public works, which is about 16% of the total expenditures for the year. So the next, we're going to take a look at your enterprise funds, which is your electric, water, sewer, and stormwater fund. So these funds are meant to be run like a business. The, the funding is by user charges and then you budget to cover these, sort of your expenses to cover those revenues. So we're going to go on line one. The first one is your electric fund. So for the year ended 2024, you had operating income of about $638,000 in your electric fund. Your service charges within that operating revenue did increase by $357,000 over last year, and your expenses also increased by about $453,000 over last year. You'll see that there was additional, there's an additional line item down in the amount of operating revenues for capital grants of about $425,000, which is a grant for natural gas engines from the MEA administration. At the end of the year, the electric fund had an increased in their net position of $958,000. Next up is your water fund. This one had a net operating loss of $71,000 this year compared to an operating loss of $48,000 last year. Your service charges did increase over the prior year by about $30,000, and your expenses, the total expenses increased by about $15,000 over last year. You'll see that under the non-operating revenue section, you have capital grants and service fees of about $724,000 of that amount, $587,000 is your ARPA monies, and your, and then $136,000 of that is your capital service fee, which was the new fee that was implemented in fiscal year 20, in fiscal year 2023. You'll also see that for 2024, you had special connection fees of about $138,000. At the end of the year, the water fund had an increase in their net position of $814,000. The next one is your sewer fund. This one had an operating income of $704,000 for 2024. Your operating revenues increased about $61,000. Your operating expenses increased about $104,000. And then again, the capital grants and service fees line is made up of $155,000 of ARPA grant monies, and then $384,000 of capital service fees for fiscal year 2024. And then also you had special connection fees for 2024 of $380,000, which are restricted for capital projects and repayment of debt. So at the end of the year, the sewer fund had an increase in their net position of about $1.5 million. And lastly, your stormwater fund. That had an operating loss for 2024 of $7,000, so basically breaking even there. You did, you will see that there's a capital grants line of about $1 million, and that's your ARPA federal grant monies. And the, at the end of the year, the stormwater fund ended with an increase in net position of just over $1 million. And then, so in the general fund, we talked about the fund balance, but for enterprise funds, it's called the net position. And this is where, so the fund balance only considers short-term expendable resources, but the net position includes long-term items such as your capital assets, like your infrastructure of your water, sewer, electric, and then long-term debt and any liabilities. So for the year ended 2024, there was, the enterprise funds had a total net position of just over $35 million. A large portion of this is your capital assets, net of any related debt of about $26 million. Restricted for capital projects, which is your special connection fees and your EDUs, was about $1.4 million, and then that leaves you with an unrestricted net position in the enterprise funds of about $7 million for the year. And then the balances due, due to the general fund from the sewer fund at the end of the year were $695,000, and then due to the general fund from the stormwater at the end of the year was $153,000. And the budgeted repayments were made during the year for these. So one thing that we like to look at for enterprise funds is your working capital, which is your current assets less your current liabilities, and this indicates the liquid or expendable portion of your enterprise fund capital. And for the year, all the funds had well over the recommendation of not less than 45 days of working capital, with the exception of the stormwater fund. And this is just a, a timing issue related, there was about $480,000 payable to, for the stormwater project that was at the end of the year payable or liability. So that's affecting that, that negative working capital there, but next year it should flip So just to end things, we, the, the town's books are in good order, in a healthy financial position, and then we just want to thank Natalie and her staff for putting up with us. We know it's not an easy peep to deal with an audit. We ask for a lot of information, a lot of questions, a lot of info, but they're always responsive and cooperative and very helpful. So appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate the work that all of you do in conjunction with our finance team of getting this audit together for us every year. With that, a few things that I did want to just highlight. Electric's net position last year was, in '23, was lost. This year, it's cleaned up to a positive, so that's a good thing. The water fund, we should start to see that improve with the new water meters capturing some of that lost revenue. And then the due to from sewer and stormwater, continuing to pay that down was one thing that you brought to our attention, I don't know, what, four years ago? I mean, you did it, you did it repeatedly, yes, but then we actually had the ability to course correct and start paying some of that back.
Right.
What, they saw from the funds probably about three or four years ago. So starting to make some progress on that as well. So thank you.
Come a long way since where we were at.
We have.
For sure.
We've come a long way together. 15, all right. Any questions for the PKS vote?
Yeah, I just had a question. First of all, thanks for a great audit. Thanks to Natalie and her team for keeping the lights on and doing us good. One question I had, one of your recommendations pertain to grants. You recommended that we maintain or track each grant on a separate Excel sheet, which sounds like good policy. How were we doing it before?
There was an Excel sheet, it just wasn't detailed enough, and then this folders paper tracking that I did. I've already sent Natalie a sample to work from, so.
Can I just provide more detail?
Yeah, just more details, better tracking of like when the expenses were paid, what was in the money, was requested or reversed, and.
It's gotten more complicated just because there's so many more grants than there were in the past, where you could probably keep paper files and be fine, but with the number of grants you've had, especially. Where you could probably keep paper files would be fine, but with the number of grants you've had, especially with all the other things that happen. And the tracking you need to do for federal grants particularly, it's important to kinda keep those things organized and contained.
Absolutely. Thank you. Will our software allow for this tracking?
Not in the detail. It's gonna be done in Excel. We just add in at each step of the way. Like it's been mentioned before, we didn't have many grants. Now it's just, need to be put in one Excel. We just have it in separate Excel spreadsheets. So we will combine them and we'll improve it.
Each year we get to learn something, do the, you know, a better way to do something and.
Especially our grant took a lot from the staff and we were a little bit on the start from the beginning, so.
Okay.
You get that?
We appreciate it. Any additional questions for PKS?
Just a statement. I mean, to see, the mayor said it and I was thinking it, just to see where we've come, just in my tenure, in these last four and a half years or whatever, however long it's been, four years.
Two months.
But in that time, when we came in and the wish was, the hope is, that we can do dot, dot, dot. Ooh, PKS is saying, you might like to see what you do. But to watch the growth, to see the, not just the, the charts, but to hear and to see it and to see while sitting and saying that the suggestions have been adhered to, that says a lot about the accountability and the workability of our finance department. Even with the changes that we've seen within-house over the last few years, I mean, some of the changes have been ground and painted and sad ones and, you know, we've adjusted, made some changes, but at the same time, on paper and federally, or being compliant, we've not skipped a beat. So that says, you know, kudos to all parties involved, thanking for the suggestions and whatnot. And Natalie, you're proved, then you tenfold for rolling up your sleeves and doing the extra hard work. This is a lot. I mean, then, I mean, again.
I could talk for hours, but I'm exhausted.
Going back to the grant part, where we were and what we're receiving and just Berlin being the Berlin-iest of the Berlins and receiving all this, you know, grants and whatnot, to be, to be even in a place where we can receive those, says a lot for, for us, so, five, five, two.
Thank you. Can you please go back to slide five? So, um, just so I'm clear and everyone who might have questions. The contributions from sewer and stormwater totaled $410,000. Well, let me, let me go back. At the end of the, uh, twenty-four, the stormwater was underwater, $7,000, right? Ish.
Okay.
Of that $410,000, is it only $10,000 was paid back to the general fund?
Um, yes.
And the total it's owed is, you said $753,000?
Yes.
Do you know, from your recollection, how, or maybe Natalie, I'm not sure, how long that has been owed?
A long time.
That's, oh, mayor, stormwater.
Oh, uh, sorry, sorry, sewer.
It's past three years.
Past three years.
Thank you. So, all right, so then the sewer's $410,000 and the stormwater's $10,000. Does the contributions go to the 2024?
And recall that we wrote down half of the due to from stormwater to the town, or to the general fund.
That was sewer.
Sewer.
What did I say? Stormwater. I apologize, sorry. Sewer. Uh, well, yeah, but I should know. Uh, sewer, we wrote down, I think, $1.7 million.
It was half of the balance, yes.
Yeah, so, slice that pie, it was just.
For sewer, yeah. So, well, I know, for stormwater, just $153,000 is a substantial amount to owe back. And we were short seven, but we paid ten to the general fund. We've, I mean, you know, just search it out.
Well, and the other part of that is too, we have to, and this came under recommendation of PKS multiple times. We were just in the capacity to be able to do that. And Natalie really does balance that out, right, whether the fund can, can handle the shift back to the general fund to pay back that debt. But we really, we have, we can't just carry it on books, and correct me if I'm wrong, we can't just carry it on the books with no intention to repay.
No, you can't leave that there indefinitely, just keep growing. You gotta deal with the problem. Has done that over a period of time.
So is this $150-some thousand dollars half of something versus the total?
It's not a half. It's accumulated over several years. The past three years, the water is closing. So to close the balance of the stormwater with a fund in a neutral position, it finds the borrowings from the general fund. So it's closing its balance and owes back to general fund. So general fund is covering the expenditures, whatever is on the negative at the end of the year. So to repay that, we established a schedule of $10,000 over past several years. Unfortunately, for 2024, stormwater had also an issue with receiving the grants in time. So we also have a little bit of closing the year issue. The funds were not received till fiscal '25 or later. So that would probably not exist, of that small loss would not exist if we would receive all the grants in time.
Thank you.
And just while we're talking about the stormwater fund, I'll get it right. The, the fund itself, the more capital projects we have going on, usually the higher the expenditures are. They're kinda, kinda ebb and flow with one another. So if we're doing more work in the fund, then the costs that year go up a little bit. If there's a year where we don't have the capital projects going on, we do have some constants, but then you don't see those like outsourced or third-party funds increase as much in that given year. So it kinda does like ebb and flow.
It's fluid.
It is true. It rains downhill.
Sure.
All right, thank you. We appreciate it. Anything else you need to go on?
Well, is there any more questions?
Thank you. We appreciate it. Yeah, absolutely. September, right?
Yeah.
I, I'll remember you're in the council. All right. Up next is item two B, so item one, which stays in line with the PKS audit, but they don't even stay for this party. Simple Fiber, give us a second. We're not, we're not ready for Simple Fiber yet, one second. So motion 2025 dash zero one, that's transfer of unassigned general fund balance monies identified in the audit from fiscal year 24, has myself running point, but really it's Mary, Natalie, and myself. And this stays in line with the financial prudence that we've done in previous years. And if you're looking at page nineteen and twenty of the packet. Nineteen is what's featured in the audit. Twenty is what our recommendation is. And, what's that? Yep, that's the Excel document. So I'm working on page twenty. Natalie, if I missed something, please let me know. Let's see, so the debt reduction, here, we're looking, if you look at the audit, it says, let me get back, that there is $298,700 in the debt reduction fund. We're recommending that we move that up to $498,700 because we have taken on a new level of debt with the public works facility. And the mayor and council's goal of the establishment of that fund is to carry at least one year's debt service balance in this reserve. It just gives us that ability to handle any fluctuations that we may have. Because really, in a time of distress or challenge fiscally, we wanna have some levers that we can pull to kind of bolster and not really cause the public to feel the burden or the employees to feel the burden of a big shift. We wanna be able to weather that storm if we have to. So the recommendations would move that debt service reduction up. Leops, the next working left to right, we'd like to increase that fund balance as well. This comes in part due to the recommendations and the feedback that we have received from the local development council and their reluctance to use casino funds because they could fluctuate in a given year toward the repayment of leops. So you'll see from the audit that there's $429,938 in that account. And that came from shifting in our multi-year plans, some of those funds over to a stabilization fund for leops. We also wanna bolster that a little bit more, not that we see anything on the horizon, but just to really insulate us, that should cover at least two years of leops if we had to. And our recommendations would bring that fund to $829,938.
Is that the cap or do you want to, like, next year?
Uh, we'll see, but I think that that, that gives us a pretty good, we feel comfortable with that. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So the question was, do you, from council member Nurse, do we foresee making that increase year over year? And I said, I think we feel pretty comfortable with the $829,000 level right now. We'll continue to keep an eye on it.
Correct, also, but also it's some dependence on this last one, of course.
If we see a fluctuation, we might wanna increase, but right now, I think our goal there is to show the county that we've put some money in, they've put some money in, that we all have skin in the game, right? And that we're also really bolstered in the event that a lot of things would have to go wrong for us to start tapping that lever as well. But it, it puts us in a firmer spot. Let's see, stabilization reserve, our recommendation is to take that balance from $1,683,134 to $2,183,134. And the reason behind that is, in the audit, the description was given, we've got ten months of really the ability to weather a storm. And that the GFOA recommendation's two months. But the way they look at it is a little different than the way we look at it, right? The way we look at it is, if, if things go bad, we wanna have, one, our unassigned fund balance, which we'll get to in a moment. But really, the, the last resort that we have is this stabilization reserve. This is really designed, okay, our first stopgap hasn't worked, now we've got another one in place before, we really need to start evaluating how we think. So bringing that up a little bit, I, I don't think is a bad idea, and it's actually our recommendation. Additionally, the capital reserve, you'll see in the audit, had a balance of $1,125,854. Our recommendation's to bring that to $2,725,854. And that might look like sticker shop, but the recommendation for that is really covering the remaining balance that we need for the town hall renovations. There, there's been ballparked about $2.5 million. We have, we have nine hundred. So this is gonna close that gap and allow us to really bring that project to fruition where we've all thought and talked about.
So why, why make that the priority as opposed to the community center?
The community center has different funding arms that we can kind of pull. We're getting a lot more grant funding that the town hall will not be eligible for. Whether that's from CDVG, whether that's federal earmarks, whether that's working with state partners, county partners. We're getting that community support. This doesn't really, it's not sexy enough, you know what I mean? I mean, this is, this is our operations, but it really doesn't.
CDVG specifically states that you can't use the funds for the general contact event.
Or for political activities or any of that.
Right.
We need money for the waters.
We need to fund that. Basically, the ability to find those funds somewhere else isn't really there. We have tried in the past.
It's just we make a lot of questions while you're spending that kind of money on town hall renovations. What really need it?
Well, yeah, we, we know that, right? But the answer that I would also give the public is, one of the things that we have, that we are all responsible for is the stewardship of public's assets. And when we look at this building, whether it's the wall that crumpled and had mold behind us, whether it's the really dismal operations of the police department that we have down below, old police department, no, not, no fault of the chief's court. That, the building does not meet our needs and is really subpar, which impacts recruiting, retention, overall operations. And with that, we are really trying to make town hall, this isn't a two and a half million dollar investment once in ten years. I, Mary, this has been renovated once in your tenure, tenure maybe, and now it's used, renovated lightly?
I don't know. It was kinda heavy when it was going on.
Dean says lightly, Mary says, it was pretty heavy, she had to live through it. But we really need to make the improvements here.
And this building is not, this building is not MEA compliant?
No, it's not. Well, it is, but it is.
Yeah, it's, it'd be nasty.
You say it is.
Wait on, put yourself on that level lift and have to get up the steps to see how that works for you.
But at the same time, eating energy is being put into funding for the community.
Right, absolutely.
From other averages, yes.
Yes, well, other averages.
Well, can I just ask, since we're talking about the community center, the, does this number that's on here, I mean, it has, it's the same as of June 30th and as of today? So has all the fundraising that flags, is that?
It's, that's not all reflected there. Keep in mind that the number that you see on page nineteen is from June 30th, 2024. The fund balance for the community center lineup is actually a little less right now, but maybe, give or take, there's a little bit more.
Three ninety-one, nine eighty-three is the amount we have at June 30th, 2024.
Right, but then we did like the feasibility study and some other stuff.
Those expenses are covered by the fundraise and this does not affect that amount that's stated here.
All right.
I think we'd like to add a little bit.
Yes, she would. I wanted to make sure we were good and then.
Sure. So to also answer council member Nurse's question, we did apply for community legacy funding for the restructuring of the police department several years ago, and we were declined that grant.
So I, I just, I. Hold on, I'm not done. I'm not done, dude. I got a little. So you'll see in nineteen, the unassigned fund balance was $4,867,955. That will be reduced or recommended to reduce to $2,167,955 because it's gonna bolster the ones that we just talked about. With that, this unassigned balance, ARPA's running dry. ARPA times are pretty much done. The ability to tap that for other projects and things that we have going on, done. And with that being said, this unassigned fund balance is really that ability when we have a project that we know we need to fund, that our revenues don't really comply with in a given year, that's where we kinda have that ability. Also in years when you have a fund that closes a little lower, it kinda taps this balance. So you kinda gotta keep a good unassigned fund balance. Typically, we want it at about around a little north of a billion, but with the financial ebbs and flows, we feel a little more comfortable at the two point one.
But it's two months of operating budget.
Right.
It's a little bit over $2 million. So the, the rule or the goal, I should say, is to be a little bit above $2 million in reserve and $2 million in an aside to comply with two months.
That's your first stop before you get to the, oh crap, we're in stabilization plan. So now council member, I'm done.
So, you know, I totally get where you're going from the one, six, towards the town hall renovations. But the other two things that are kinda sticking out in my head right now are the public works building and the road that's gonna go to it. So how are we kind of preparing for that?
Public Works is funded through the bond, which is also the reason that we increased debt reduction by the amount that we recommend doing to cover that one-year payment of the bond. You'll see that expenditure in the FY twenty-seven.
We have $725 for the interest only and $26 would have principal and interest, which is close to $200,000.
Okay, and so.
And then the road. The road, I, I have not given up on the idea that we can maybe get some grant funding for that. That's the goal, so. We haven't lost sight of it, it's just not in here.
Oh, and my other question was, disaster recovery, recovery under committed. Is, is that a recommended amount, the two fifty-six, not one? The only reason I'm asking, I know that's a lot of money, but I'm kinda thinking back to the days of when the state had its internet incident. And it might be a little bit more than that, depending on how severe the situation is.
So this is really just like a stop to leave, kind of? It gives the ability for the.
Two fifty is what was set up originally, just as a decision of the, on a little bit of safer side. The small amounts that you see is the interest earns through the years of being in the saving account per se. The two fifty, yes, it is not a full amount that would save us from disaster of any.
So is it, so my statement to you said first, that the disaster recovery is kind of there as, oh, something's happened, but if we need to tap into like stabilization, that we can take care of that.
So what would likely occur, right, is if a disaster hit Portland that required us to then hit this disaster recovery, this can be exercised by the town administrator with pretty, uh, yeah. Yeah. The, it doesn't really require council approval. The way it's set up is in the event of an emergency, that is within the spending authority of the town administrator. Now, if we have to tap that, it is a bad debt in Portland. And likelihood is that we would then be tapping probably on the side to get things fixed and then seeking reimbursement at state or federal level for those types of things. But that is designed to cover.
And the next step would be to go to the stabilization. Stabilization is a reserve or a disaster or a debt recovery or anything else.
We're really pulling several levels at that point. Any other questions? Question?
Well, I just wanted to say, I'm happy to see the unaside balance being put to work for us a little bit more. I think, um, you know, was it forty percent? Does it take it down to eighteen percent? Uh, I think that that's a sound policy. It's in line with the reserve policy in the US body minus me, um, approved in, what, two thousand and twenty-one. So, um, the only, I had a question specifically about the debt reduction. You may have covered it in the reserve policy, it says to cover one-year debt service. That covers one year of the debt service.
We have Heron Park and now we have one. So it's a little north, but it's not super north of where we need to be.
So, yeah, I think that, um, I'm pleased to see, because I understand, we do it a little bit differently, you know, we have the stabilization reserve, which is the reserve, or the stabilization reserve, which is our reserve fund, but our unassigned is essentially reserve fund A. So reserve, we have a little bit, I think I would call it two reserves. But, um, I'm happy to see the unassigned. I think it's a little bit near forty percent, that was a little bit high. This is before I saw this motion, I believe we received the audit first, um, that's mainly, we got to do something with that. I remember a year ago, basically sitting here, I think, waiting for a plan to do something with those funds, so I'm happy to see it tonight. It's all, I don't have any issues with anything, really, just, um, pleased to see it down, the unassigned balance being put to use.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's moving with the tide of Berlin, you staying with your meetings here, sir. I think, you know, we're, we're rolling with the tide as far as the changes that have been asked of us by the LDC as well as the things that we know we have coming down in the pipeline, making the changes right now. Yeah, that's what I think that this is the smartest move for us at the moment.
Alright, with that, I'll take a motion, uh, for twenty twenty-five dash zero one. Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, it's under a presentation, but you are correct, it is item for approval, so it does have a public comment. Anyone in the public that would like to, uh, approach the mayor and council regarding motion twenty twenty-five dash zero one? Alright, so you know, we'll take action by the council, pushing to approve twenty twenty-five dash zero. So motion by Councilmember Horace, a second by Councilmember Nurse, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes, let the record reflect the motion passage and end of slate. Alright, with that, staying in line with town hall, you want to share what will be available for review starting tomorrow? Right, isn't it tomorrow?
Yes, um, I just do that later, but sure. Um, Danielle Haley has, um, uh, from Haley Architecture has already put together draft plans of, um, town hall renovation as well as planning and zoning, and so we are going to solicit feedback from town hall staff starting tomorrow.
Mayor and council.
Mayor and council as well, and, um, try to get everybody's feedback over the next few weeks so that we can, um, share that with her and then move on to the next step.
Available tomorrow at twelve one AM.
Uh, well, not twelve one AM, it's twelve eleven.
I will definitely notify anybody that it is available. I'll have them set up, and once it's all set up, and I've also figured out the best way to collect your feedback, I will, uh, email you and ask you.
Uh, well, we have it, we, we.
We have it electronically, um, it's just so hard to read, but it's small, and I think you'll, I think you will, it would really, um, be. It'll, it'll be to come and see on the thing.
So we're, with that, uh, there will be, I think, two steps we ask for. One downstairs for the employee group as they circulate into the book there. One also in front of, or by Sarah's office, or maybe here in the hallway. Um, feedback can go to Sarah, so that it's in a, a central spot. But then what we'll do for the public as well, um, we're going to keep that comment period open for a little while. So with the mayor and council meetings going on, we'll have them here in the hallway, so that you can take a look at them as well. If there's any public feedback on the design, keep in mind, our staff use the building every day, so it's designed functionally for that. But there is the public meeting spaces, I think everybody will really like the fact that the elevator would hopefully, our goal is to have a new, uh, true elevator there. True elevator, I use, I know we have is an elevator lift, whatever.
A chairlift.
Chairlift, uh, but we want to have a real elevator for the public as well as the ability, uh, for the public to utilize the front and rear entrances to come in and out during public meetings. So you'll see that layout, uh, but we, we also appreciate the, the feedback of everybody, so if there is any public feedback, please channel that to Sarah. Alright, thank you. Alright, up next, Simple Fiber's presentation, so sorry, gentlemen, we were talking a little bit, come forward. Uh, Simple Fiber Connectivity, I'm going to give you just a little introduction before we start. The, um, the governor, previous governor earmarked ten million dollars to the Tri-County Council for. Just grab a chair, gentlemen.
You want to sit up there or just stand?
No, 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 sit up here, but bring, bring another chair up. That would be enough for everybody. So, uh, under, under Governor Hogan, we did, uh, the Tri-County Council, the Eastern Shore received ten million dollars. With that, it was sectioned out among the three counties. Worcester receiving a portion of that fund, and with that, the commissioners decided that it would be a nice idea to, uh, support fiber backbone for, uh, the commerce areas in municipalities. That's how we have Simple Fiber here with us this evening. With that, we have had some early discussions with them about what that would look like, but they're here to talk to us publicly about, uh, their, their path forward and, and vision, and then we can have some dialogue. Thank you, gentlemen, just introduce yourselves, I think I said the stage.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Brett Davis, Kirk Davis, and Andrew Helton here, and, uh, we're trying to keep it brief, but, yeah, thank you for the introduction. So the nice part, when you've been talking about budget tonight, nothing we're presenting tonight costs the city anything, and, um, we're not looking for, uh, a, anything from the, the customers either on the install side, so. The nice part, this is a service that we're going to bring to town, we, uh, already run it through Pocimoke, and we are in the process of running through Snow Hill. And what we do, we're an internet service provider, similar to others, uh, in the area, but what we do, we provide fiber directly to the home. So that's coming from one of our local data centers, goes directly into the house. Uh, in most cases, we're drilling underground, so we're popping up right next to your house. And, uh, the nice thing with us, again, there's, it's not an obligation that anyone signs up, but just from feedback we get in most of the small towns, uh, your current providers are pretty terrible, so, um, you know, it's not, like, it's not an obligation, but we can offer this service. And what you'll see, so our intent is, uh, this is an initial mapping. We, we will cover, uh, the city of Berlin in pretty much its entirety, is, is the goal and the way our grants are structured, so. We know that there is phases, so we just wanted to show a general concept, um, can't say that all of this happens day one, uh, it's a multi-step process. Touching just on some, uh, kind of quick background, if, if you want, the, the nice part is, this isn't one service that only has one outcome. The cool part about this is that we're building infrastructure in your town, and once the infrastructure is in place, any ideas we can come up with can be utilized. So a cool example of this, in the city of Salisbury, we are, uh, assisting the police department in putting cameras in all of downtown Salisbury. At the same time, we supply the parking garage with high-speed internet that actually allows them to build people off their credit cards very quickly. Uh, and then simultaneously, we built a private network to the entire city of Salisbury. We even housed their, uh, backend IT equipment in a data center. So there are tons of different applications for what we're going to install, and the nice part is, this is just a piece of infrastructure that goes into the town, and then as it's needed more and more over time, which it will be, as you can imagine, technology's going to progress, uh, everything we're putting is designed, not for five years from now, not for ten years from now, but pretty much indefinitely. So with that, uh, I would like to hand it off. Uh, Andrew Helton is our network engineer, as well as handles a lot of sales, and will be the person that, on a, uh, weekly basis, if people in town are looking to learn more about the service, Andrew's our resident expert.
Yeah, thank you for everyone's time, you know, and this is a very exciting project, and it's not necessarily the first town that we've, you know, rolled this out in. We've been in Denton, Princess Anne, Pocimoke, Breaking Ground, and Snow Hill, and now we're really excited also to serve, uh, the town of Berlin. Just knowing a lot of businesses and friends that actually live right here in Berlin, I've heard a lot of personal stories of struggles with legacy providers, specifically in this, uh, area right downtown. So, long story short, my, uh, job is really to introduce the service to your residences and your businesses. Stories that I'm hearing for businesses downtown, sure, we might even be able to save them some money, but just consistent internet that they don't have to think about, is it going to go out for this day when they're, they're arriving to work? Uh, people that are on a fixed income, just general people, we're actually able to help them save money, and also at eighty-nine dollars a month starting out for residential internet, that includes taxes, there's no installation fee, so truly, it's easy to plan for. Uh, but we're an open book, and really here today to kind of just paint the picture of our process, but it is going to be a, a long rollout, so to speak. Uh, but as we run service, I think everyone in the city can get it, but more centralized, the downtown area first, and focused on the heart of Berlin and your businesses down there.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
That's kind of, if you go back to your slide with the map, the first, I guess it's the second slide. It'll, yeah, this way. Well, first off, you have me very interested, you said there was no cost, but, um, tough. So is that why?
Up, up front.
Up front, yeah. Is that why the purple, is that your primary, and then the blue would be like secondary? The purple's downtown, so.
Yeah, it was initially, um, there's just some initial, uh, concepts based on some early conversations, like we had with Zach and Tim for areas where it might be overhead versus underground, um, that, that was a distinction on the color.
And some of the, hold on one second, I think I know where you're going, some of the priorities that we outlined were not just downtown businesses, but also the future community center that we're working on, uh, because of the fact that that is going to be a hub, a hub for many people.
And, and the green icons also illustrate, uh, the city municipal locations that we know are living there. Yes, and they very well could be, you know, as, as my view is a city pump station or something like that also needs them.
Well, I was looking at this, I'm sorry to be cutting you off, but I've been chomping at the bit on this for a minute, good for you to get here, thank you first off for being here. But my question to you, when you say, you've been waiting to get here, hub, Berlin, downtown, dot dot, keeping us up and running. And then I look at your purple, and I see some of the great places that you're preliminarily looking at, and I love that, I truly do. I'm looking at this, and I do see, I guess a plus with me when you mentioned community center, because it is right near the church and that kind of thing. But when you talk of fixed incomes and things like that, I think about a lot of the local churches, because like, say, I'll say Paul's right here. Am I calling, I'm calling the wrong thing.
You're, you're all directed though.
Stevenson, you know, Stevenson on the, on the, on the street down here, houses, you know, the soup kitchen and whatnot and all those things. So being able to make sure that they're up and running and folks that are coming in to eat and could do their wifi and whatnot. But being able to have that available also at St. Paul's, which would be across one thirteen, which is still.
Can I paint a big picture for you too? So we serve, uh, like, Comico Presbyterian, right in downtown Salisbury, we serve many of the places of worship there. Uh, the unique scenario about them, they have a really big place of worship, but they also own a sister building right next to it, uh, and they house multiple nonprofits that are tenants of theirs. Well, actually, we have decreased the internet bill for the overall church, we've given them more internet than they ever had, and the tenants actually do not have an internet leasing, they're just sharing part of the internet cost with the church. Those are just unique scenarios, yes, we have the full interest of everyone that we serve in a win-win situation. The places of worship are unique because they stream a lot. And when you're streaming service and people are watching it consistently.
Yeah. Well, I'm not, and see, I wasn't even thinking about the church services and worship and that type of thing as much as I was those, um, ministries and things that take place during the one week, like the soup kitchen, people are stopping in, doing their, picking up and doing whatever. If I need to get on there and do a job after teaching while I'm there, bam, I know the internet is working. But not just here on Main Street Berlin, I want to be able to make sure that you're crossing one thirteen, because St. Paul's is a great deal on that side of the highway. I don't want us to get lost in this, in the, in the hubbub of Berlin, thinking that Berlin is.
Honestly, we have to get, you know, get ourselves a, a footprint, and, but honestly, there's not, there's not a hard line. The city's going to continue to grow, and, you know, we intend to grow along with it, so, um, you know, infrastructure, as, you know, you guys have been discussing infrastructure all evening, you know, it's, uh, it, it's a challenging process, but again, once it's there, it's, it's well worth, you know, the investment, and, you know, we will continue to make that investment alongside the city as well.
I think about that, and I think about the children in the daycare centers and then being able to be on the internet, the children and, you know, the old and the young.
The school systems, yeah, if we can give you another really cool thought or a thought. So the goal of tonight is to start a conversation, and then there's so much back and forth about the best practices and the people that we want to serve. Um, a really cool opportunity we've just, uh, dealt with the state of Maryland is, uh, that they identified there was a need for solving the gap between the internet in affordable housing projects and non-affordable housing projects. So we actually are, uh, I'm very proud, our team is very proud to say, we have come up with a program in the state of Maryland in which we are offering the cheapest fiber access to affordable housing in the entire state of Maryland through a special grant that we actually created with the state, and so, uh, or sorry, we're, our use of it is unique. Uh, there's some people in Baltimore that we use, and, but in Chrisfield, we will deliver three hundred and fifty affordable housing units through a state grant. Uh, those people have access to internet for twenty dollars a month, and that's high-speed fiber. Uh, so that is roughly five to eight times faster than what you have in your house, will be accessible for twenty dollars. Now, that being said, I have no way of proposing that we can offer twenty-dollar internet in a normal scenario, but what we were able to do is partner with the city of Salisbury, uh, we've done agreements with the local school system. All of these different programs require us to start a dialogue, and then as you identify needs, that need might be that the police station needs one gig circuits.
Sort of how you guys were using creative financing, you know, you can pull from one bucket, but technically not another. We're able to say, okay, well, you know, by, uh, hooking things up in a certain way or utilizing a certain grant, we can also make that cheaper in, in other ways, but, you know, kind of pulling different buckets. And we are looking at communities for this, the grant, uh, here in Berlin as well.
Please look at the communities, because they're outside of Main Street Berlin.
Yes, so this would be, yeah.
Tell me, um, what is your plan, what is your plan, time phase as to delivering this service downtown and this service to neighborhoods?
Yeah, um, I'm a little bit hesitant on.
Um, yeah, it's, it's going to take.
Construction.
He designed it, yeah.
We didn't want to bring dirt to the ground.
These are multi-year projects, you know, being realistic, um, so, uh, with that said, like, if we break ground, you know, within six months of breaking ground, which, and this is an open discussion, and there may be, uh, you know, how the permitting goes, is, is it open-ended? And how do you guys name one things, but within six months, we will be offering service to people in town. That's not going to be everywhere, but that's going to be, you know, kind of like the kickoff point, and then from there, it would be expanding.
And we, we would also have a list of, kind of, um, the way we've done it in Pocimoke, there are certain paths that will get run first that are very centralized, so in this case, downtown Berlin is one of the grant targets' biggest priorities, so that is a natural first stop. But know that as we get a feel for what the customer demand is, or it might be municipal demand or whatever that looks like, uh, we then kind of adapt and build to that. So like, we're hooking up Pocimoke Bowling Alley in, in the next couple of days. Well, that happens to be a pretty large user that's on the opposite side of town of where we started. It's taken us nine months to get to them, but they signed up originally, and we told them, hey, you're just on the opposite side of town, it's going to take some time, but, um, they hate their service, and we're more than happy to wait, so it's an example where we wouldn't have gone to that as the first stop. But if we know there's a huge demand and we have a customer that's signed up, then we can kind of build to that and, and kind of put those to the top of the list.
And to that point, that's where, when we met initially, that we did talk about with the grant coverage, which is the downtown area, but then we also looped in as part of, which I think is in the grant, and we can get it covered, yes, but also the ability to reach the community center. I think we kind of laid that like a hook, because then it, it makes it easier per se as when we're looking at extending that next.
One of the other, uh, conversations that, you know, we're just sort of like beginning today, but looking for, uh, feedback on. Uh, in the past, we've had, um, we have a conduit share agreement, which we did in the city of Denton, uh, and we also have one with, uh, Worcester County and Snow Hill, where, uh, in, in each of those cases, uh, they had existing facilities that, uh, essentially were being underutilized and that we are. being underutilized and that we were able to come in and share that. In the case of Berlin, because you guys are in a very unique position of owning and maintaining a lot of utility poles in the city, that's a situation where we may be able to sort of work with the city to share that resource and then on the opposite side say, hey, if the, you know, new civic center or whatever is something in mind, maybe we can just include, you know, trade resources essentially, so the ability to access the poles without, you know, recurring revenue, and then we could provide a permanent service to some of the facilities that you guys need in exchange for that. So, that's sort of an ongoing conversation that we'd like to have, but something that we wanted to bring to your attention, and that will sort of impact to some degree the design that we put forth.
How are you bringing this line in, are you running it through major highways, are you putting up a big tower somewhere?
The backbone will come initially through broadband, so like, we'll have a path coming from Salisbury to Berlin and another one coming from Berlin to Snow Hill, so they essentially, that backbone of the shore is maintained by broadband, and we already essentially have facilities in other areas, and then we would just be adding Berlin in there and then adding...
And you're active in Snow Hill now?
Not active in Snow, no, we're in Pokemon.
We should be breaking ground in the next, basically, two months.
But you're active in towns like Denton?
Absolutely.
And how long have you set up there?
Three years.
And how much downtime does the network have?
So, as, there's little, it'll be like segmented, but the worst case scenario this year is under twenty-five hours out of the whole year.
Out of the whole year.
Yeah, and to be honest, that only was a, I'm telling you, the worst case are newest network upgrades, the customers that are on our new list network, it's under twenty minutes.
Is that because of weather events or...?
That was because of that, basically, I'm not going into the two complications, we had the way we started this business, which was we were reselling our own broadband in the simplest form, was we were reselling internet. Since then, our network has upgraded considerably. Now, we had hundreds of customers that we had set up originally and they're very time-consuming to upgrade them, now our network has four different internet service providers, so when you click Google on your computer right now, there's only one path, it goes to find the internet and it comes back. Our network will actually tell you there are four different paths that we can pick from, leaving the shore in four different directions, and not only physically, but then they're going to different data centers and end sources, and that computer will then immediately from our network know which way of the four is the fastest and go to it. That also means now if one of those four heads is severed, in about thirty seconds the system fixes itself, immediately it eliminates us in five. It's less by price over sales speed, it's helping thirty seconds.
You create a redundancy.
Yeah, we have a redundancy. A biologue, so those current network customers are under thirty minutes.
And how does it, I'm sorry, how does it affect Comcast?
Our current Comcast when they're the same thing. Well, I don't, they, I think have, I can't recall, I know we have two agreements that are existing, it's East control, Yekola not east control, Sam Piper, and it's Comcast, one is exclusive, the other is not.
You have a franchise agreement, so all those cities on the shore sign franchise agreements, that is for cable, so you are only being reimbursed for cable services, the internet is actually not legal to put a franchise agreement on internet, because, you know, the fault process is they want it to be open. So, you, this would not, we do not even offer cable services, so we will not compete with Comcast, if somebody really wants to keep their cable, they, we just wouldn't even try to compete in that situation. To know though, you can now stream Comcast on the TV, so if you cut the cable and you did this, you can now still buy that exact same TV program through us, you just wouldn't be part of their formula.
Yeah, I'll segue.
So, we actually have that, people will switch to our service, still have things, I mean, still want to watch sports, okay, you would stream certain things, you're going to be considered TV.
Segue line for a moment, the, one thing that we discussed during our meeting was the need to link the town municipal buildings in a separate strength.
Yes.
When we talked, we thought that there might be a pathway toward that possibility, I think that's going to hinge largely as we get closer to like an agreement for utilizing our poles and things of that nature, but that is something that we are still very interested in.
That's, I'm glad, if I can catch it, we're not to speed on the conversation yet. So, we have a partnership with the city of Salisbury that is the best example of this, and so, what we do, we're not providing internet between their locations, there is an underground pipe running between every single municipal building, or soon will be, we've done most, but we haven't finished. All of the municipal buildings in Salisbury will have a pipe connecting them with one, with two of our fibers running between each one. We have ninety-six fibers, but they get permanent use of two, and so, those are called dark fibers. The beauty of that is just imagine for the mayor to send his email, or actually more importantly, if he needed to receive an update from the fire department, there is actually no need for that information to leave for the internet, and if for some reason our internet was down, it would not affect his ability to receive that message from the fire department, because it would literally be traveling from the fire department here at the speed of light. So, it is very, it is as fast as science will allow us to go, and what we, we also like it because, one, it means that you don't have to worry about outages, you also don't have to worry about security, because that email would not even go to the internet for the Russian hacker to take the information, it would only stay in Berlin.
It'd be the equivalent of making all of their buildings, like, being inside the same building, and you have an intranet.
Like making a direct call.
Yes, correct, intranet, but it would be a citywide intranet.
A private network.
You know, I'm not quite sure what Berlin has, but essentially, I mean, Salisbury has its own IT department with half a dozen people working in it all the time.
It will improve our security.
It will improve security, speed will become astronomically quicker than what it is right now, and then, you know, also a level of enduring storms and things, we are planning, the reason we are suggesting going on poles, to be clear, if, if we have to pay for them, it doesn't really make logical sense, because they're not actually as effective, but going underground is extremely expensive, so our fault process in all of this is that there might be something where it's really expensive for you to buy dark fiber, it's really expensive for us to be on pole, there's somewhat of a more logical path for us, that can save us both.
Particularly in Berlin downtown, which is, yeah. Extremely beautiful, and disturbing any of that would be very challenging.
Yeah, but the nice thing, when we talk about drilling, I don't want to go between the parts, the leads and logistics, but I know one of the biggest concerns in towns is what is this going to look like on my street, are they tearing up my street? The incredible part is that, yeah, no, it's, I don't want to, but, basically, the really cool part, so, we have, our drilling systems are designed so, or, 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 where it happens, so these drills are able to make a hole that is very, very minimal impact, we're pumping small, like, you know, one of the planters, and we're able to go about six or seven hundred feet and deliver that same thing, so when we're coming down the street, we are making a very small impact and we can then put everything in the ground, so you're not seeing massive transformers, there's nothing above ground that's causing a visual obstruction, and we are not tearing up your street, we're not tearing up a ton of yards, don't get it wrong, it's a big piece of equipment, so wherever it parks, and it is drilling a hole, but this hole is pretty low.
You've probably seen, you know, it's been a lot of direction drilling on the shore, latest, you can probably get to buy, you know, various contractors and whatnot, but it's, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
What a technology when you get to see it in action.
Yeah.
I don't remember, see, there's. Princess Anne.
Sorry, was that?
How long have you been with this field, Princess Anne?
Princess Anne, several years now, Chrisfield, we're just in the process of rolling out that.
The fund has just been administered for that grant essentially, and we're approved for permitting and now beginning the construction portion of that.
I just wanted to say one more thing. Back on the map, this, for your future planning, there is an area of town that is not at all touched and just FYI, the area near the school on Oceans East on Sea, that was Sea Road, that's part of town as well, so just.
Absolutely, we actually are working on a big response for Worcester County.
You mentioned your name.
So, we supply Waconville County School System, we are redoing the final install for the Somerset County School System next week, and we are placing a bid this month for the Worcester County School System, so that would require us to go there. It wasn't originally drawn, just.
I think there was a weird handoff of county and city.
Yeah, well, because it's, yeah, there's a resident area, so, I just wanted.
I was thinking you were going to cross.
Well, we're blue.
No, 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 I was thinking, oh, your district, you were the...
Half-breed.
I was thinking you were, you were 113.
So, when you bring your fiber to a house, would you actually bring it inside the house or is it?
It's, you know, it's similar to the, to the way Comcast would do it in the sense that we would come up to the house, we would mount a small box on the exterior, and then, yes, we would bring a fiber cable directly into the house to where the modem, the router is located, so that it's fiber all the way to that physical router.
And then the router does wifi, it has four ethernet ports like you're used to, but it cannot reuse Comcast wiring. Now, there is things that we can recommend if somebody wants to use that for internal wiring, but we're not using that to deliver service, it's all brand-new infrastructure to a business or residence.
Do you have to use your exclusive modem or?
Yeah, but you could then put. Yes, so sorry, the, I mean, fiber, the fiber infrastructure is going in the ground, the fiber itself is universal.
Right.
The, there are, I'm not even sure how many, but let's just say a dozen or so major companies that produce like the equipment that could be used on either end, so in theory, you could remove, you could, you could replace the equipment with some new piece of equipment in ten years, but so long as we're operating it, yeah, we would be using, if a customer couldn't really buy their own, nor would they want to.
It's more for network management, against troubleshooting things, we can see exactly what's happening on the router, they do need some assistance, so, but that's not a charge for the monthly, when I say eighty-nine for residents, that is all-inclusive, there's no missed maintenance fees.
There's not a monthly maintenance fee. And no install fee, just.
Like the lemonade's, ice cubes.
And there's no, and there's no triple supply.
Lemonade.
We're not trying to trick you anyway, it's a one-set fee, we cover up here, so taxes, it's eighty-nine dollars. And we even need our own credit card processing fees, so, so everything we can on us, we're trying to be as upfront as possible, and we know that the current experience you're having is the exact opposite, which is how can we trick you into giving us six dollars a shirt a month?
Don't know where.
And then, just to double, you know.
You got deep.
I just didn't want to throw, one more thing, just, Kurt wanted to talk on next steps, but just two more creative things that you guys have talked about, infrastructure, one idea we can throw out there, just, you know, we are going to be drilling throughout the town, so if there is a need for you all to be moving poles underground, you know, just a thought process where we are going to be, we're a professional drilling company and we're going to be running conduits throughout the entire town, so if your electrical department says, hey, there's a potential need that we need to be drilling on a street, it is not our goal to sell you that, but at the same time, it is a very, very expensive drill, and one that is set up, running one pipe versus two pipes is not much difference, so there would be a cost savings to anything like that, and those are the type of things, if you said you wanted downtown wifi, those are the type of things that this infrastructure allows, we are not here to sell to anyone, you can tell us what you like, we can then give you a proposal, but the cool part is, once we are here, we, there's a wish list of items you can pay for. I'm sorry, and then Kurt wanted to touch on.
We kind of touched on that, I, I just wanted to, like, kind of leave you guys with one, something to sort of put in perspective, you know, originally, like, you know, you have the Verizons or their precursors of the world, they've installed, you know, these, these massive bundles of copper, and that was originally for phones, it was never intended to be used through the internet. When, you know, you first had dial-up, essentially engineers.
Great, wasn't it?
Engineers were able to like retrofit this infrastructure that was installed long before anyone thought of the internet, they were going to make it work, and then the same thing was the case, Comcast had already installed, and, and, you know, other cable companies had already installed a coax infrastructure throughout the nation, but it was never actually intended for the internet. Again, clever engineers were able to retrofit coax cable to provide the internet, but it's actually been a stopgap measure for like thirty years, so, you know, we've kind of only recently decided as a nation to invest in an actual internet infrastructure. Fiber has been the backbone of the internet since the eighties, it was always the backbone of the internet, it was just never like effective enough to be brought all the way into people's residences, and up till now, we've sort of come up with hacks in order to make it as good as we can with what we already had, so I think it's, you know, just kind of putting in perspective, that this is like really the first time, and we're just, you know, we're one company among many, this is sort of a nationwide trend that's happening, that is putting in an actual internet, dedicated internet infrastructure for the first time.
And then, one last, we, I think, touch on, there's some things we'd like to work out, we wanted to have, this is like an initial meeting so you can understand the concept, it's funded by the county, so the next part, you know, it's not a topic for you guys to do.
In part.
Yeah, in part, and we are going to put it, just to clarify, we're putting millions of dollars into your town through all our private financing, so this is us investing a lot, but one thing we did want to mention that is going to, is definitely something on our wishlist of items, is we need to locate a small data center here, and when I say data center, as, we call it a hard, it's probably the easiest term, so this is a ten-by-twelve building, very nonchalant, concrete block, you can paint it, you can put a mural on it if you wanted. We are, we would need a place to place that, and usually, in all of the other cities, they, not all, but in most of the other cities, they'd allow us to do on public land, you know, in several cases for no cost, what we're looking for, we've got a couple places that we can vote about, to know one of the ones was, what's the name?
One of the, you know, we're looking for centralized area, in, in, Snow Hill, for instance, we were able to locate at the base of the water tower, and, you know, it's something where the city may even decide to house some of their own equipment, if, you know, we come to an area where you have an intranet, it would be sort of a focal point where things come in and out, so it could also be something that the city would find as a, you know, a valuable resource.
And we talked about a couple of locations, I think we put our heads together on, it could be worthwhile for that, and then use that as part of the presentation.
Steve's front yard.
Yeah, Steve's yard is great, it's on a hill.
It's going to be lovely.
Light bunkers.
I would hope that maybe, in the interim, we can sort of.
It can never rate it. He likes the colors, neither of them, so. Sorry, Steve.
Your hub, the area surrounding your hub is going to be the most, tell me about this, what is just the spot.
So, fiber can actually transmit signal up to forty-three miles from a single point, so wherever the hub is in town is kind of a viewpoint, in transport.
Oh, okay, it doesn't need to be.
You've seen a spot.
Yeah, there is some geographic location, location preference in the sense that you wouldn't want to pick it on one part, one side of town, so Kurt has a couple, very specific, they're like, this is centralized, so just imagine if you were making a spider web, if you started in one corner of a spider web, we can make sure that, we're going to catch the fly no matter where in the web, and you wouldn't notice the difference, but to build the spider web would be extremely difficult if you started on one end and start going to the other.
And security from when we talked about.
Yeah, a more central location provides like, is a sort of an innie redundancy, so that, you know, you're not contingent upon.
Yeah, one, one wire being cut, it leads to ten thousand people instead of being spilt around, and so when you ask, how many outages have we cut, there are pockets where it'd be like, you know, my favorite example, where you're in church and they call, they're like, our internet's out, and we pulled up twenty minutes later, and there's a giant excavator out front, I know why your internet's out, there's a giant excavator in here from a forty-foot hole in the front, there we go, but that is an example where because we don't run any many trunk lines on the private properties, or, like, in this case, this was allowing us to say, okay, it's an isolated incident, them and their neighbors are having a bad day, but not everyone else in the network is feeling that.
Ten by twenty?
Yeah.
No, we'll, we'll talk about that, I think there are ways to move and have some of that conversation, given that some mic line and security side of stuff that maybe, or Gass will put his head together on where we discuss that. I think knowing that's a potential is a good thing for.
Does the building need to be climate controlled?
We would, we would take care of that, we would provide, it's essentially just the size of a shed, it's, you know, concrete and solid so that, you know, it's, it's a mini bunker, you've seen them, I mean, like, in downtown Salisbury, like, you know, pump stations are, you know, typically made from these, you guys have, you know, above ground, well, I guess pump stations are usually underground, but there's.
Wellhouses.
You'll see, wellhouses, yeah. Side of the highway, things like that, just four concrete walls and nice solid metal. Anything else that you all want to cover this evening?
I think that's most of it, and hopefully, we can sort of continue this discussion over the coming weeks and we'd like to be able to come back.
We're signed up right now, but.
We'd like to be able to come back with a more concrete. We'd like to be able to come back with a more concrete proposal before the council next time, and say, hey, here's a draft agreement that we've sort of discussed, and sort of run that by everybody.
We'll aim for that being ready.
That sounds great. That sounds great. And if you all want, I know you were just discussing kind of feedback in the last, with your drawings, just know if you also wanted to send us an email, if everyone wants any compiled questions, we'd be more than glad to also come, perhaps, if you say, hey, here's concerns and thoughts we have going into it, and then we can make sure that we tailor the presentation to that.
Perfect. All right, thank you, gentlemen, we greatly appreciate it. Good to see you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next is item three, motion for approval. Three A, motion twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two, the reallocation of funding for a new variable messaging DMS, signed, and Public Works Director Jimmy Charles is going to run for it.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor.
Good evening. Did a great job on the national end of the night.
Oh, thank you.
So, when we budgeted for the backhoe, we actually budgeted right on cost. And, but, as we were working with, the salesman asked about our existing equipment, and we were, we asked, yes, give us pricing on some of that existing equipment. After the pricing that they gave us, and discussion with other, Jamie and Bob, we determined that we would probably not get that price on govdeals.com, you know. It was a very good return in trade-in value, and we, so, at that point, we traded that piece of equipment in, which gave us a little bit of surplus in my budget. I've been working with, I mean, we've been wanting to get one of the signboards that would help determine throughout the town of, for parking, we could list it for events. One of the ideas, too, was for trash, like, when around the holidays. I could put that in certain locations, so like, the week leading into Christmas week, we could have put it over, say, in the western side of the town, because that's Tuesday's route, and listed that Tuesday's route will be picked up on Monday. It would help even up by the post, by the library. And a lot of people in that general area would have saw, hey, my trash is now on Monday. Then on Wednesday and Thursday, leading into that week, we could have moved it over to Lake Flower Street and said, your trash service on Wednesday will now be on Thursday, the twenty-sixth. So it gives us a lot of options with this signboard to put out. Jamie would be able to use it in ways of, there could be a water outage next week, he has repairs on the street. Anywhere, that type of activity, that water outage, just a general information board, we can list our upcoming events. The police could use it for anything that they need to, emergencies, detours, traffic control patterns, and stuff like that. So I would have enough money allocated to purchase one of these signboards.
One of the things that Jamie pointed out particularly was that in the past, it's been relatively easy to borrow the site, and that is no longer the case, so.
And we've run it down.
Yes.
So there is a class that we've experienced previously. I mean, makes sense on our end, from a logistics perspective, we'd be able to help message and get the.
This particular one also, we could actually, from my understanding, we could actually turn it on by our phone. And so if it is, we could turn it on between eight and four, so it isn't blasting all night, and then it can be shut down, and then we start the next day from, with internet and activities through that Bluetooth key ability.
Jimmy, can the message scroll across the sign, or is it fixed in the three lines?
The full matrix could be pictures and scroll and do all, the full matrix has ability to do pictures and scroll and do, yes, from my understanding, like arrows that we point arrows, could scroll left and right and up and down. But there is one that's a lesser value, that is just a three-line, it is just three lines, and then it would be all words, like the one that's showing you there.
So Jamie, I'm sorry, Jamie, 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 I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. So we're looking, you're looking to pretty much use this, well, staff, all staff, pretty much weekly, right? I mean, events, parking, trash, if notifications if needed.
Correct. And it's money that still would be sitting in the capital in streets.
Any questions?
Is this a bid for just a three-lunch or what?
This one is for the full matrix, which is the whole.
And currently, you have funds in your budget to cover this.
Correct.
Any other questions for Jimmy? If not, we'll open it up to the public for comment. All right, any comment from the public regarding motion twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two? All right, seeing none, we'll take a motion to the group.
Motion to approve twenty-two-five-dash-two.
A motion from Councilmember Horace to approve.
Second.
Second by Vice President Burrell, all of you say aye.
Aye.
All votes, as the record reflect the motion twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two, pass to the House.
Thank you.
All right, up next is the jet item three D, and that's motion twenty-two-five-dash-zero-three, the extension of temporary moratorium on certain matters to be decided by the planning commission. Has Mary Ballen running point, but her and I are going to share over this. First and foremost, this is a reoccurring item for us to have considered based off of previous motions passed. Each time we have this on to come up before us again, to hopefully make some headway on this, and I hope tonight we're able to do that. One piece of exciting information to share is that the town has been searching for a planning director for some time now. We've completed that search, thankfully, and a candidate has accepted the offer. Her name is Ryan Hardisty, she's from the city of Salisbury, with over fourteen years of experience in planning. She's going to come to us in the role of acting planning director with a transition period into the full planning director role. She will start the first week of February.
February third.
February third. And we're, I think, from a town perspective, from everybody here, we are very excited to have Ryan start, and very excited to have a candidate fill that role. It's very important, and it has impacted our operations for far too long, and we're looking forward to hopefully transitioning that in a different direction. With that, with the assistance of staff, we have prepared a memo for this evening regarding the moratorium. It's coming to the high points for all of us. So the memo outlines the recommendation to lift the moratorium on final site plan review. And however, we would like to continue to hold the moratorium for a short period of time through the transition on rezonings and annexations. With that, the initial moratorium was enacted to ensure that town's growth remained aligned with the unique character that we have, and make sure that projects don't jeopardize our quality of life. And it's critical that we navigate the transition period of hiring and onboarding into planning director before we fully lift this moratorium. I don't like it as much as the next person, but a phased approach of lifting, I think is our best approach. So.
Just like you mentioned.
Thank you. The context is there, the rationale, so the hiring of a full-time planning director is essential in lifting fully. Transitioning and onboarding period, it's important that when, we've expressed to the candidate, Ryan, that it's going to be like drinking from a fire hose, but I think that we need to meter that a little bit, too, right? We have to be understanding that we have a new candidate that's starting, and to throw the floodgates open in one swoop is probably not the best approach. It also allows us to have the candidate really understand, and us hopefully further develop our strategic vision for Berlin, and making sure that the projects that we approve maintain the character of our town. So with that, let's see. The reason that we're favoring the lifting of moratorium for site plan approval is that we do have some engineering support that can be helpful in getting those projects across the finish line, with still onboarding the new candidate for the planning director role. And then after, I think we're kind of ballparking the forty-five-day period, but hopefully, with Ryan starting in the beginning of February, we can reevaluate this. I think we're aiming for right around March first to reevaluate.
That would be about forty-five days.
So, that's about it in the nutshell, Councilmember Horace.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, it kind of works out, because we are still doing the, they have to put in thirty days before.
Right, correct.
Correct. So really, this is only a fifteen-day extension, technically.
Technically.
But, so, we're looking at full.
Yes, anything submitted now would not be on an agenda until the March meeting, because the thirty-day deadline.
Right, yeah. Okay.
So in essence, it's a shorter period than forty-five days, but the goal is that we can lift the final site plan now, final site plan review now, that would allow folks to get onto that March meeting, and then by lifting, hopefully on March first fully, that'll allow for folks to hit April, May, and so forth with the other applications. It's a phased approach, I think it's important, one, the longer you go to, and I can't speak for the formation of the planning commission's agenda, but I think they've got enough work on their plane that they're going to want a phased approach to, to lifting that.
Well, if I, I mean, I think a phased approach is a good idea. That was kind of what I was hoping you'd be heading.
Mary, if I could ask you, in your estimation, how many projects, projects do you think are waiting to be?
I'm going to say probably at least a half dozen. I'm really ballparking there.
Some of them filed, and I haven't yet been filed.
We have not received final site plan files on any of them. The stormwater reviews on all of them have recently been conducted, and each of them had some comments. I can't speak to the technicalities of those comments, whether they were very simple, this page is missing a signature, or they were far more complex than that.
So Rick is reviewing plans now, and checking back, or whatever.
Right now, most of them are under stormwater reviews, so we're going to.
E A and G A.
Yes.
They're just waiting, some of them may be waiting for improvement.
As I said, each of the outstanding projects, as of this moment, had outstanding issues that they needed to address. It does not preclude them from submitting their plans, but it does mean that if those issues aren't addressed, they can proceed to privacy.
So, as of today, we have no plans pending final approval?
Nothing has been submitted as of today for final approval.
That's likely to change for March.
I would say so, yes, yes. As I said, some of the comments that were issued were very simple, one or two things, others were a lot more complex. But I don't have the expertise to speak to, you know, it may look very complicated to me, but in reality, to an engineer, it's relatively simple. I don't.
I could just add on to what you were, I think it's important to, with the planning director, the acting planning director, to remind the public that our planning consultants involved will be agreeing, will be staying on through this transition period as well.
For a period of twelve months.
Yes, so, I think that's.
Till December, right? Till December, right?
December.
He said he wanted this happen in November, I said, really? We only going to work for like two weeks in December, come on now. It's a lot of the year.
This is important for the transition, I think, for Ryan's beginning here. I support the phased approach that we have here. We enacted this moratorium in July, with the idea it's going to be a temporary pause. But I will say, the clincher for me is, you know, we have a direction.
And direction.
Yeah, so, that, to me, was, you know, I don't like the idea of us not being able for business or under reception of it. I certainly support the final site plan, and, yeah, the forty-five days is kind of, you know, it's a number, obviously, but it's an interesting point, we need about the thirty-day period that we have, like the planning commission needs. So, yeah, I fully support, I mean, you can hear from the public, of course, and anybody else, but I think it's a wise, thorough approach, and, yeah, looking forward to moving forward.
And the bulk. Go ahead. I think we also need to make it clear that Rick, our consultant, he reviews the plans, he makes recommendations for what they need, but he hasn't approved the plans. That's by his choice and per contract.
So Rick, when he came on, very clearly did want signature authority, that applies with town administration, and we respected that. We needed Rick's expertise, we value it, we're grateful that he's staying on for twelve months, Rick. And, and, yeah, so with that, that has rested with Mary. Now with this transition, it is going to transition to the acting planning director for signatory authority. That's the goal. Now, with that as well, I think it's important to note that the bulk of the work, when you see this moratorium, right, for the public, the bulk of the work that we are doing is site plan review, final site plan review. It's kind of one-offs to get a zoning change, it's kind of all one-off to get an annexation replaced. The bulk of the work that we're looking at is final site plan.
Rezonings and annexations are rare, few and far between. There are a couple sitting out there, but.
Which is what we're looking to lift tonight, so. All right, with that, any more comment? If not, we'll go to the public. We'll open it up to the public, anybody that would like to address the mayor and council regarding the planning moratorium of motion twenty-two-five-dash-zero-three.
Now, this motion will need to be re.
It will, yes, it's going to be rewritten with a recommendation favorable from the council, they have to make this recommendation, so I'm going to help them, to lift the moratorium on final site plan review, continue the moratorium for forty-five days for rezonings and annexations. Any comment from the public? Yes, just a name and an entity or street name.
Mayor and Council, Tom Zambes, working on the new microtowel here in Berlin, happy to hear this, very happy to hear this. Our engineer, late engineering, putting finishing touches, so we should have something for you all to be on the March one deadline, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. We're looking to kick twenty-two-five off with success and stuff.
Okay, and one more thing, based on your budget, we have seventy-seven rooms, that's water, electric, sewer, stormwater, seventy-seven toilets flushing, seventy-seven showers. We're going to have a lot of revenue with also the property tax, so we should be able to help, you know, the budget quite a bit.
Thank you so much.
Okay, go ahead.
Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two?
Three.
Sorry. Come forward, name, street name, or entity that you represent.
Eric, Eric Bethel, on the planning commission, on West Street. I brought up at the last planning commission meeting, which we haven't had, I don't know, six months?
Oh, yes.
Four months. I know Councilmember Horace, who had brought up during a joint meeting, I think at the last council meeting I attended, I think it would probably be very beneficial with a new planning director, considering the amount of projects coming down the pipeline for a March meeting, to do something joint. I know most of us on the planning commission, that family has a lot of stuff going on, so to have all that stuff, you know, at the end of the moratorium, you know, come right down to our place, I don't think we can give it the amount of time it deserves. So, you know, hopefully that'll be in consideration over the next couple of months.
I will tell you that actually tomorrow, an email will be going out. We're trying to establish a schedule to have the various boards meet with Ryan present, but that would be more of a meet and greet, just to get to know each other, that kind of thing, rather than for formal actions.
Gotcha. And what we could do to try and have that opportunity to get together, we've realized that your plate's going to be full, right? And thank you for the break that you had, but your plate's going to be full now with the planning commission. We've got some work that's headed your direction. We'll probably try to do like a work session, separate and aside from your regular meetings, where we can get together and work as a group, so that'll be coming shortly as well. We've done that once before, it was not very well attended, but we hope to have the full group there to have that.
Well, together. Well, we were having our, you know, comprehensive planning work session, and maybe that happens as.
And I will say that part of that is, in our dialogue with the candidate, we express that we are looking to make investments in our planning budget this year, to include help, hopefully, with the comprehensive plan, things of that nature, the updates that need to be done. So we are cognizant that with this new person starting, we're trying to invest capital, human capital and physical capital to help get everybody up and moving, so. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion twenty twenty-five dash zero three? Okay, seeing none, we'll take action by the council.
Steve?
Motion to approve.
With the recommendation of lifting final site plan from the moratorium and continuing the moratorium for forty-five days for rezonings and annexations.
That's it.
Thank you. That's what I thought you said.
We'll, we'll have to redo this.
Motion by council. You said that, so will.
Seconded by council member Nichols, volunteer to say aye. All votes, let the record reflect the motion as amended by council member Green, time begins. All right, up next, the announcement, page, or number four on our agenda. So land lease agreement for the lot to be used for public parking. So, this has been part of some negotiations for some time. I want to publicly thank council member Green and Nair for bringing this back up. We had discussed this a long, long time ago, with President Varell and I, with the council. We lacked the ability to really pay for the lease, and now we had a pathway for doing so, so having council member Nair and council member Green bring this back up before the group for consideration, and then us actually being able to act upon it, I'm really, really happy about that. This will allow us to have a two-year cycle where we can discuss ways about how we're gonna fund that in future years, because we are gonna pay for the first two years using ARCA funds. Now with that, we're cognizant that this lot is located in a residential area, right? We don't want to, we don't want to degrade the neighborhood in any way, right? We're cognizant that landowners could change the property within its zoning rights to different things, right? But we're grateful that they were willing to have a conversation with the town about hopefully trying to solve the challenge that we saw as a, as a capacity problem, basically. I think council member Green put it as a capacity problem, and he was right. We lack the ability to really have parking close to the downtown area. That has hindered comments that we've had from the council, being able to go to the dentist, being able to go downtown and slip in for certain things. So hopefully, we are able to work towards solving that challenge. But we don't want to create another one, right? We want to make sure that it has the aesthetics that it needs to be able to cohesively blend with the neighborhood that is residential. We want to make sure that we don't add to the traffic challenges, we want to help with those, right? We are cognizant that during the event, the chief will attest to this, we get a lot of parking problems in that area, right? Makes it difficult to get an emergency vehicle down there, makes it difficult to provide the needed emergency public services to that neighborhood. We want to help solve that problem. With that, we need the public's help, right? We need the, we need the chamber of commerce, we need the residents that are directly impacted as well as those that are in the community that have really good ideas. So in the coming council meetings, we will have opportunities and possibly even schedule separate meetings where we can seek public comment, have that dialogue with one another about what the surface looks like, what the aesthetics look like, how do we limit lighting, and really make sure that this works for the town of Berlin in the best possible way. So happy to announce the lease, but it really is the first step forward in a very long path for us to work down together, so. Our goal is to try and make some headway for the upcoming, the upcoming tourism season. Our, our season really picks up, I can attest, into the latter part of the spring, summer, and then into the fall and the, and the holidays. We want to try and capitalize on some of that, right? We want to make sure that this lot, if possible, is up and running. So I would say in the next meeting or two, expect some messaging about opportunities for us to work together on that. So that's really all I have for the announcement. I realize some folks might be here for that, so I do want to open up any questions from the public, for anybody that's here regarding that lot. If we can answer them, I'm happy to, probably won't be able to, but I'm happy to engage in dialogue. Seeing none?
You can just, you can just model that, that, is that covered up, needing the participation of the citizens, the merchants and things of this nature? We also need the participation of those, those visitors that come here for the day. Maybe, maybe they could utilize this spot as a dead parking and leave some of the spaces downtown for our residents to come and do their business. And you will, you can imagine how many times I have heard that, that folks would like to go to Range Reef, but there's never a parking place downtown. You know, maybe some of those spaces can be left open for folks that need to go to the bank or go to Range Reef or go to the dentist.
It's important that, that our call hygiene is really important.
That is our.
All right, I've been up since Twitter. Not by choice. Okay, yes, yes. Just name, street name?
Yeah, my name's Brad Parks. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
I live on West Street, one oh seven west, basically diagonal to the proposed subject lot. I'm also a stormwater engineer, professionally licensed in the state. I, obviously I was surprised by the news, I had no idea that this was going to happen. I, I'm fond of green space, as someone who cares about the environment in general, but also I'm pragmatic, I get that, that, you know, there are businesses that are concerned about public parking, and we also see on the, maybe infrequent days, but when we have town events or, you know, certain ones stick out to me, Halloween is day one, where there's obvious safety concerns around parking and driving through busy streets. So I, I understand the concern. I guess, reading this document, the lease and some items in it that state, you know, that it's not permitted to pave with black tuck, at least premises, but talks about gravel crush and run. Looking at stormwater, you know, I have concerns about potential for stormwater runoff, you know, compacted gravel that is not a pervious surface, it's treated as impervious from regulatory perspective. I, I also saw online something about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty parking spots, and I, and I get that this is preliminary right now, like this has yet to be fully developed from a land development perspective. How much, like, what, what's the backbone that, that town has to state that we need over a hundred parking spots? I guess that's one concern. Number two would be, given the fact that we, you know, we still have this moratorium, but that now there is thankfully a planning director coming online, is this going to then go through a full plan check and land development process with that future planning director?
So I'll try to take them in stride. The number of parking spaces, and I'll, council member Green, council member Nair, you served on the subcommittee, if you see something that I'm missing, please add that. I think that's initial thoughts, but I don't think that's been vetted out. So our engineers, our stormwater engineers, they will help us fully vet that out. We don't, we're cognizant of the flooding challenges that exist on West Street, we don't want to exacerbate that, right? We, we worked diligently to try and solve that, it'd be counterintuitive for us to then further complicate the challenge, right? So we want to make sure that whatever we do doesn't add to that, and I think, I'm not an engineer by any means, I'm pretty sure legally, we can't just make an exemption for ourselves, nor would we want to, right?
Ten projects go through the same.
The same vetting process that we ask anybody else to do, we will do ourselves. So I hope I answered some of your questions.
That's the first part. I guess secondarily, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, other projects I've worked on professionally across the country internationally, you know, there's a big push for not just, like, parking is one issue, you know, the scale of that issue can be determined through probably some logical study and assessment. But on the other side of things, you know, I'm just hopeful that we can get other inputs that, using a two, over a two-acre space, right now, beautiful green grass, right now white with snow, but that, you know, voices will be heard and that there could be other, you know, really win-win with, you know, there's, there's a lack of general green space also near the town center, and so that lot as a blank flat space, I can see a lot of other potential uses, and not just my personal opinion, but from other neighbors and other folks that would like to come to our town. For example, small play area, people walking their dogs, that right now, a lot of people use that lot for their dogs, not that they should trespass on private property. I am happy to hear though, that, that actually family members are welcoming the, you know, the notion of using this as, leasing it out to the town, because, you know, should be realized, just want to make sure that it was heard.
Thank you.
One of the things the mayor alluded to was the fact that we have to find a way to pay for this. So the committee was kicking around some ideas, and we really wanted to find a way to make this revenue neutral, and the only way to do that is to make sure it's paid parking, and that's a possibility that could happen. If that becomes a reality, what that means is, during most of the time, that parking lot probably won't be used. It will probably primarily be used for fence, when people are driving around trying to find a spot, that's one thing they thought, I mean, used mostly.
Just another idea, there are a lot of park, stormwater parks that I've worked on in Washington State, there are, in Pennsylvania, there are projects where, you know, in this region, maybe, maybe Chesapeake Bay grants can, you know, if you, if you could play a stormwater angle to it, just thinking of other issues that have been lingering along, like you mentioned on West Street side of town, or on the stormwater side.
They have to be cognizant of what we do, the, the lease says, that they have to be mutually agreed upon improvements, because we are really testing the waters here on whether or not a parking lot will work, which is why we have opted and wanted to have a ten-year lease, with the ability to break that if we have to, if the idea's not working out. But our goal is to, to build something that does work, and then maybe it transitions from lease to a purchase at the end of the ten years, we don't know. And then, once it's, if it progresses to that point, the town would have more control over the ability to add amenities or change things around. Right now, we're really kind of buttoned into a parking lot that may be able to be used for other things, but it's really predominantly got to be a parking lot right now.
And definitely the concept, Brad, and, you know, go a long, way back, Washington Street, and, you know, as someone who has had, is able to change quite a bit by a new business, I can totally sympathize with the concerns, what you're maybe looking at, but also realize that, from the understanding and confidence, that there's no intent to get a bite on you as well, either have the port cultural committee come out, shield it some, you know. The part, the parking issue, our strategic plan, came up constantly as a true problem, and not just for the businesses to, that provides a cap on their revenues or anything like that, it also impacts the residents, so the combined of Baker Street has been very negatively impacted by a couple of businesses. Driveways blocked, my driveway has been blocked, that's why we're sort of attacking this that we have on our property right now. You know, so I, I think, totally legitimate concerns you have, and legitimate, and we can keep it, we'll keep it respectful and love to have your input as much as possible. You know, gravel is a term that has been used, you know, I understand, you're, you're an expert in that field, so, you know, I think we, it is a little bit of a blank slate as far as what we go here, but I think that, to me, the really, the only non-option was to not do anything for parking town of Berlin, because it is an issue that, honestly, I hear about it every day, it's just where I live, but it is something that I hear about every day. Since I've been on the council, next to the cost of living, it's the biggest issue I've heard. So just so you know where I'm coming from, you know, my perspective, you may disagree with that or not see it the same way, but I definitely know I established your plan meetings where it came up repeatedly, and I've had businesses communicate with me and also neighbors communicate with me about the annoyance and the public safety concerns of having their driveways blocked and by parking issues. So just wanted to explain a little bit where I was coming from with this.
Appreciate that. Well, thank you, and I, I'm sure I'll be involved.
Absolutely, we hope that you and many others are involved in that. I think that when we do that, and when we have the opportunity to come together, a better product exists, right? Right now, like Steve said, it's a blank canvas. We get an opportunity to try to do our best within the confines that we have available, but we really want to make this something that's better, not worse, so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding the land lease agreement? Yes, just a quick, just name and street name again, just for the public.
Eric, Eric Bether, not to go nuts, Brad, but one hundred and eleven West Street, so I am directly across the street from the lot, obviously on the planning commission. Just curious, you know, I know you said it, we'll have to go through the same process, but it would be a conditional use of that lot, correct? Which would have to get a board of appeals.
It, it may be, I, I didn't.
I don't know.
I didn't look into that, boy, honestly.
I mean.
It will go through the same, if that is the necessary step, then.
Sure, I mean, some things are just recommendations from my perspective, I know there's been stuff going around that, yeah, twenty twenty-five, hopefully it can get used. Obviously, we're not reviewing plans at the planning commission level until March, and it needs board of appeals. You know, I know a lot of people are up in arms about it, so maybe, you know, getting some clarification on what the actual process it would have to go through to be used as a parking lot would alleviate some concerns with people, and, you know, knowing that it actually has to go through some type of design process, which I hope it will go through as an architect, you know, more than just, you know, engineers and, you know, people, you know, in-town engineers don't, you know, I, I think it's a, a really good opportunity considering all these things that we talk about all the time, stormwater, you know, being a little bit more potentially refocused in town, things that can be potentially grant-funded, you know, you go, you know, environmental friendly, I mean, I know there's grants out there for that stuff, so that maybe, you know, we can layer that on, on top of, you know, it being paid parking and not being how it gets funded, because I know as soon as you start talking about a lot of those, you know, technical design things later on, it goes, oh, you can't, we can add that on from a cost perspective, but if it becomes a real kind of didactic, you know, design, where we're like, you know, how about instead of, you know, paying your driveway, you're doing gravel, you're grabbing local, we did in this public parking lot in Brooklyn, and you can do that on your driveway in a residential area, but, but, yeah, and then, honestly, I second most of, you know, Brad's comments, you know, say, day by day, you know, no offense, but just like, getting things like, oh, we'll get the port cultural department in there to, you know, make it pretty, you know.
Is that functional too?
Not gonna be enough, you know, it's a big piece of property, you know, noise pollution sound, you know, all those types of pollution needs to be taken into account.
Your goal here is, do you want to be a good neighbor?
Yeah, and I'm all for it, I see as, you can make a beautiful parking lot, you know, it's a great opportunity for the town, I think that, you know, hopefully around, that one of the coolest small, well, look what they did with their public parking lot, you know, all cool teaching opportunities that you have there. But yeah, yeah, hopefully it will be a very open process for.
Sounds like a good off, uh, topic for our joint meeting.
Yeah, no doubt about it. And this is a little outside my realm, but when you bring up, you know, paid parking, seems like everybody would still park on the streets if that parking lot was a paid parking lot.
I think you would have to have some enforcement, like, from the side.
It has to be.
From the neighborhood perspective, like, if people start, then parking, because the no parking zone is really one side of the street in many areas, I think we would try to make it so it's a clear corridor, so that emergency vehicles can get where they need to go, and then you have to have that enforcement, like.
Obviously, the enforcement of it is not great.
Right now.
Seeing it firsthand there. But yeah, it's, it's metered parking downtown, part of that, you know, that would be a way to actually force people, if you feel they're in park freely, to keep people off of, or some type of permanent parking to park on the street and stuff like that, if you're a resident of the town of Berlin or a business owner, you know, maybe you get different parking privileges, but.
During events, it's known people want to park close to the event, and this lot provides that, and people don't really question about paying for parking.
Yeah, no doubt about it, that's why, yeah. Or if you do it elsewhere, so you actually push people to a parking lot where they're causing no traffic concerns, right? Unless there's that enforcement, because if we have restrictions in place now that are not being enforced, then by a particular way, that they'll be enforced when it's a public parking lot, but, and then also all the other safety concerns with a public parking lot, that there is some proper enforcement of, of how things are operating currently in town, after we, that that they'll be enforced. town, after we, that that they'll be enforced in a public parking lot. And the layer on, you're talking about, oh, well, most of the time it'll be empty, well, sometimes an empty parking lot is much more dangerous than a, you know, public parking lot, you know. I don't, we looked at it across empty parking lot, I'd rather it actively getting used.
Right, but the other thing was there were a lot of time residents walking dogs or whatever through there, that could still happen.
Sure, sure, yeah. But a public parking lot that gets used is more enforced by pedestrian activity than an empty parking lot, that's, you know, came out, and we've got a bunch of cover and people can do stuff across the street that we can't see, but.
All right. Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding the land lease agreement? Yes, just come forward if you don't mind, we know each other with the name.
I was gonna say, can I just sit here?
Uh, no.
No, I'm not using. Mary Habuski, Westminster Drive, and I live off of West Street, and I agree with what, I believe it was Brad said, as far as the stormwater, you guys know how I feel about stormwater, but on the other hand, I think it's something that we really need, like, I walk up West Street and I know a couple of people here live on there, I mean, there's an event or something like that and the way those people park and drive, it's dangerous. And I've got grandkids and I'm literally walking in people's yards to stay off of the road because of how dangerous it is. And I think, you know, a parking lot, is that perfect for that spot? Probably not, but at the same point, we need it. We need somewhere for these people to go, and if it sits vacant most of the time anyway and it's just used for events, it's really not going, it's going to make it better because you're not going to have those people on Washington Street and on West Street, they're going to have an option to go somewhere. So, I mean, as he said, I think stormwater is always an issue, but I think this is something that really needs to happen because, like, I mean, I hear, I do the We Heart Berlin page and I hear constantly about how people don't come because there's nowhere for them to park. So I don't know what the right answer is, but I think this is a step in the right direction and hopefully something can be worked out, where everybody, you know, can work it out.
I think that you said something that's very important, and that's, you don't know if it's the right answer. I think that the way we come to the right answer is by taking each one of these points and trying to build the best possible thing we can to get.
And as he says, Berlin's only so big and we've got narrow streets and, I mean, and that's what brings you the charm that, but you got to have somewhere to put these people, you know, that works for the businesses too, so.
We're going to try and give it a good old college try and see how it works out.
Yeah, well, thank you, and I am on the thing about stormwater.
I love Berlin try.
People wrote, uh, the better, what did you say?
The Berlinianest of the.
Yeah.
I feel like I should patent that before you start using it, but I want you to borrow that if that's going to give you some community center funds.
I was thinking of a tattoo, actually.
I was thinking of like a t-shirt as well. I guess that's Berlinianest of the Berlinianest.
All right, anyone else for the land lease agreement? Okay, all right, let's move on to the departmental reports and downtown administration reports.
The only thing that I have after, after having been out for a week and then not coming back because we were out for snow, I'm a little limited in what I have to report, but I do want to remind everyone that most town offices will be closed on Monday in observance, Dr. North from the King Day, if ratios posted on the website in various places about how the, that impacts trash collection, etc.
Any questions from the council, from mayor, or departmentals with the reports that we have?
I do have, and I do want to turn it over to Kate quickly.
Greetings, mayor and council. There's a quick update on a post that we shared last week regarding Henry Park Playground Upgrade. As you may have seen, demolition test started on the large playground. Ryan Lewis with Cunningham Creations slash Game Time, him and his crew have been on site. They initially projected that the demo would take about four days in total, but given that there's snow on the ground and the weather, that has gotten a bit delayed, so they do anticipate the demo being complete by the end of this week, last Friday, as well as removing the existing, or hauling away, I should say, the existing surface, the ground surface there. From that point, they're going to leave the area untouched for a little bit to let it settle, let hopefully the weather improve a little bit and then begin construction on the new light unit. So we don't quite have a timeline on that part just yet, but they do anticipate being complete with the demolition by the end of this week.
Have they ordered the equipment that we need?
They have.
Good, so we won't have that delay. Once the ground's ready, they can start.
Yes, sir.
The larger part, not the entire.
Just the large playground.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that part, because I think the thought for some folks was that everything was going to be completely gone and it wasn't going to be until, like, the weather rose.
Pretty much what you see gone right now is what's going.
Yeah, they were, they were in mud and whatever they said, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but despite the weather, they haven't, they've made quite a bit of progress there, so they, they do anticipate by the end of this week being complete with the demo part.
And, and we can reasonably say that this spring, we've got a new piece of equipment that'll be there ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you, Kate.
Sure.
Jimmy, also thank you to Cody Health, and that's the one getting the overall scheme planned out for what type of equipment we were going to go for.
Parks Commission, of course.
Yeah, Parks Commission as well. We turned that one around on the dime, like, we were sitting here, what, a couple weeks before the application?
Yeah.
And I was like, we don't want to miss it, like, what do we do? I think we had another idea that was on the list.
Yeah.
And Cody was like, this thing's really rough. Like, I had asked him to paint it.
It is.
That's what it was, I had asked him to paint it for National Layout, and he's like, man, it's really rough, we should just replace it.
Yeah, that was a quick one.
We do, good job. All right, and, let's see.
And it really gets utilized, like, at all, yeah.
Any other questions for staff or mayor? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the mayor and council, the new gentleman that just arrived in the right, my right, he's featured in all black with some shiny stuff.
He is moved.
I would say, anyone from the public that wishes to address?
I was talking about her too, please, so, all right.
Up next, comments from the council, starting with vice president for.
I would just like to echo the mayor's comments at the start of the meeting concerning the work of our town staff. You guys did a real good job, street cleaning and trash and, and police officers out. It is really good to see how, how conscientious our staff is in providing appropriate public services. It does mean good, so just thank you all.
Just to clarify, that very much was a team effort. The electric guys were out there plowing water resources as well as public works.
Let me say, at the time of the cold incinerating down by the hospital, I was down there and that was a mess. That was absolutely.
That's what I thought when I got there. I thought to myself, this is going to be a long, but.
It was too.
And, you know, really don't know that the, the section of town that was impacted by the cold being down, but my lights only believed the ones. Maybe it was a good, but, but that was a mess.
Was. I think a lot of the redundancy that really Tim has brought to the electric utility paid off, correct, if I'm wrong? Because I think we had more out initially, but then you were able to isolate and then work through.
I had, we probably had 98% of the customers back home within an hour.
And do you know, from Tim's presentations he has made here at the council, I'm able to explain to residents why their lights are not off a long time. It's because of the redundancy and the measures that have been taken to, to address those, those situations. I've been on the council long enough to, to remember when, when your lights went off, they stayed off. And you had to work out.
Is the stuff going to bad for refrigerators? I remember mom and dad saying, you open that door this many times.
Don't open it.
That's right.
The court full of ice, yay.
You and your brother conserve that, whatever you need to open.
Well, you all did a fantastic job.
Well, wait, wait until you get done with fiber optic internet, man, you're going to be next.
Yeah, I can't wait to call a company.
Council member, Derek?
You know, I too want to thank Jimmy Charles and crew for clearing the snow. I saw Jimmy that morning and, of course, I always have a big smile on his face, and he says to me, man, I really love to plow snow. I can't believe the town pays me.
And I'm like, after he's been there since 3 a.m.
That's the deprivation problem.
Just started it.
He all wet on that? Everyone was here?
Thanks for allowing him to do it for free.
Well, how about that?
He misses Pennsylvania. He's like, I want to ask.
This was fun. He loved it. Anyways, thanks to Tim for getting our power back on, your ADH, well done, well done. And also thanks to Ivy for a great ball drop. Well received, kids loved it, parents loved it.
In Norway.
In Norway.
It was great, yes.
And it looked as though downtown was pretty full.
It was. It was.
And Mother Nature held off just long enough. Justin, just a little bit of my back.
Right.
Councilman Rick?
Oh, I took a note from Steve's book, I, I made a note of the thing I was going to say this time. See, I'm trying to get better in 2025, say less, will say more with less. That's my, Berlinianest of the Berlinianest, say more with less, that's what it is. So, yeah, put that on your tattoo. I will, I will, that whole arm, honestly. I will say, I can't say this enough, in the, in the short amount of time that I've sat on this dais, the changes, the implementation, the, the plans, the, ooh, maybe we should think about, we should possibly, and then following these things to, to fruition have not just warmed my heart, but has made Berlin truly a more sustainable municipality. I mean, I, I say that with not just the things that we've heard from PKS, I love the innuendo but I like calling them by their true names, so I was sitting up here saying their name a few minutes ago, but say that should be good. But anyway, those, hearing from them that we are truly compliant across the board, as I said, with all the changes and whatever that happened, that have gone on in Berlin is huge, that's big, that says a lot about us, but to also at the same time, if I think back to when our, one of our biggest worries was the growth in our police department, if we were going to have a police department that grew, what was going to happen to safety? I mean, hearing the wives say that they were worried for their spouses who were literally out on the road by themselves, and to now see that we've got new cadets and what have you, like swearing in or people coming in across the, what do you call that part? Across, whatever it is, they're, they're coming from other places, but with say.
Lateral.
Whatever.
Sorry, I'm taking a board or something.
I'm going to talk to what Jake's been upset for, so, but yeah, that lateral movement, though, seeing things like that and to know that those spouses, if you were to call them today, that they may say, I feel a little bit safer knowing that our police department is pretty staffed, and at the same time.
We're one away from being fully staffed. Nobody's counting, but we're one away.
Don't make, stop, stop, don't make shit up, because I forget, but I love that. And then with Tim and his guys, like, little dude today, he was so amped, he was wired. You know what I'm saying? He was.
It's all over Tim.
I mean, I mean, well, he was so, he was so excited today about what he does and to see that he's gotten to a place where we had no linesmen and you were growing this. Look at what you did, like, kudos to the town of Berlin and what we do here. I know that there are a lot of people with a lot of input on how we run and how we operate this facility and what we do. I mean, let's take it even to Ivy's outdoor summer, god, you know, bam, that thing right there. I mean, during 2020, it was like, ooh, we're going to have to separate and be all over the place, but look at what it is now, it's like the end thing to do, you know, people are even in town, ooh, who's playing today at the farmer's market? So Berlin, I've had people saying last year, and maybe 15 years ago this would have been the case, if it weren't for Ocean City, Berlin wouldn't be. I would say, hmm, I can, we can erase that completely. Berlin stands alone. We, we function, we operate, we can do our thing because we are Berlin. And I say kudos to us for those things, kudos not just to this body because, I mean, the good Lord's will and the creek don't rise, leave me sitting here for a second, but this changes. You guys are what makes this happen and what makes this work. So I truly appreciate you and what all that you do and the forward thinking. Tim, I wanted to say to you so bad when these guys were talking about the fiber optics, Tim, what do you think about that? Because I know that that is something that you've been talking about for the longest time, one of your goals.
There's a lot we have to discuss.
Yeah, so I want to stop and say, Tim, but I didn't do that, but I, you know, I'll call you in a couple of weeks, say, Tim, but hearing those things, look at where we're going, you know what I mean? And I don't want us to be a place that allows other folks to come in and tell us how to do this, because we know how to do this and do it well, just make sure that we're the people that's driving this town and not outsiders. We're the Berlin.
The Berlin, Berlin, Berlin.
You don't have this.
I'm catching 2:00 a.m. Jack?
Uh, oh, well, I want to echo, you know, the thanks to staff who really wrote the great, you call on council.
You said it, but I have a flow and at 2:00 a.m. waking up, it's nice that I follow my flow.
But I do want to say thank you, and I would, yeah, thank you to everyone who worked and did quick cleanup and everything, and Happy New Year. I also want to put on top of that the outreach, the social media posts, the code reds that went out, I think that was very helpful, very informative, and very good communication in an event. I do quickly just two more things, I just want to say, I am, I said this before, but I'm just really, I don't know if excited is the word, I'm just very happy that members of the public are coming up and talking about their stormwater concerns. I'm always happy to get that in the forefront instead of it as afterthought of something that we're doing. And then the final thing, Jim, I was just wondering, after all the weather events that we had here, you're probably already doing it, but I did see some pictures about West Street, and I know Henry's Mill Drive, it has some like, what's that called, like alligator ring or splintering in the asphalt, so I was wondering if maybe after everything's kind of melted and everything, if y'all could just kind of take a look and see how that works and do our plan for road maintenance? And also the track, the path that we're seeing cater, I don't think there's anything to do about it now, but the tree trunks are really messing up the asphalt over there. Is there, is there a plan for maintenance on that, or can we look into it?
When we did that, they said that they thought that the roots didn't need to be ground, right?
Oh, if you start grounding the roots, you're going to kill the trees.
Right, right, okay.
So in a way, they tried to do the best they can, but there is some things we can go back and maybe.
See if we can work together on?
Fill them back in and.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about everything, but, so, and that was, that was all I had. Looking forward to hyperdrive in '25.
I want to slow that down.
It's going to catch on.
People about hyperdrive, like, let's.
I don't know, I don't like.
Let's just put it in.
It's not scary.
All right, just real quick, so when I was, we were leaving the menorah lighting on the earth scene, which was lovely, well, actually, while we were there, it was interesting, kept getting asked when my mark of the bar was. Folks were very surprised that there were non-Jewish people there, which I think is what Berlin is all about, you know, it's like, no, I've guessed that maybe half people are here were Jewish, you know, so it was wonderful. But as I was walking down Main Street, we walked by two bike cops in the Berlin Police Department.
Floyd and.
So a kid asked, when do we get bike cops? You know, but the point being that it's amazing to see.
How old were the bikes?
Twenty years. We're just able to use a while, I'm just going to say, but it's been a while.
At least it done longer.
Police Department has been staffed to this level.
To be able to use.
The point, so. So, when you see a picture on social media of, you know, six, seven officers on duty at the same time, you know, there were times when we know that was not the case. So, I think it's wonderful. But I also just wanted, on New Year's Eve, I did, maybe I did left my head in the sand, but I did not know that the kids' ball drop was gonna be on the building, which is fantastic, I thought. You had that one and then the one on Broad Street. I think it was an amazing night. And also, couldn't help but think about, you know, about a year ago, probably this meeting, we had a conversation about the adult ball drop. So, listen, I'm not gonna lie, but it took some, I heard some arrows over that as the approach, concerns that it wasn't being held, which is fine, you know. But we, I think you, as you're entering the up years, you have to bring balance to everything. I still stand by that decision, I think, for the best part of the town. It also rained that night. Then the next day was the whole situation. So, it recurred to me that here, these folks, a lot of the same folks, would've been working New Year's Eve, right, until 2:00 AM. You know, so I felt really, while I understand the concerns, I felt very vindicated, really justified and proud that we made that tough decision because I would really, as I sat at my house and watched football or whatever the case, was not out on New Year's Day dealing with the power outage. So, I think that that's something that wasn't lost on me at the moment. And I hope, I'm glad we made that decision while I've been popping them with everyone. I think it was the right call. And kids' ball drop was a huge success. I'll say thank you to everybody else for all the other reasons that have been stated.
Did you say they asked when your brunettes went over?
That's what they had parked too.
I think it was the neighborhood. I think some of the folks that came from New York, you know, I think, well, actually, it wasn't Australia.
Australian.
They were jamming.
We're all early, right?
Two out of them. With that all, you know, it was great for our crews. We were all usually, we were out here by eight o'clock. And when we had it last year, we actually, from eight to 10, we were just here maintaining. And we didn't get out of here till 2:00, 2:30 last year, 2:00 AM. And we were home around 3:00. And like you said, most of them guys would've been coming back in at 2:00 in the afternoon. And we were back here at 2:00 in the afternoon to midnight on New Year's Day. So.
And it offered the, several businesses took it upon themselves to do their own midnight ball drops, which hopefully increased business for them.
Right.
And the ball that we had hanging on Broad Street from the bucket truck, I don't know if you've seen it on social media, but we had that there for people to be able to take pictures with the ball in the background. It was completely for, it was a hotspot, an Instagram hotspot, and people really liked the fact that they could take a picture with that ball in the background. It's great publicity for Berlin.
If you saw the pictures from the rooftop, I don't know if you saw the crowd, I would say that is probably the largest attendance for a New Year's Eve event that we've ever had. I mean, it was packed.
And I think, I said this to Steve, and then we'll come back to Vice President Farrell. I said that I think the weather impacted some of the, our ability to see the full change of scope, right? Because everybody dissipated, a lot of people dissipated when the weather started to change. And I think those folks would've lingered a little bit more, gone into some more of the restaurants. I think that kind of changed the, it impacted fully. But I do agree that it was a very large participation.
Well, and one thing I feel like that I have always had in the back of my head is when these guys are leaving here at 1:00 or 2:00 AM, they're out on the road with drunk drivers on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, you know. And I don't, I feel like that's always been a concern of mine, having our staff here late like that, you know, going home to their families and being on the road with them. So, I think it's really important that they are able to go home and enjoy the evening with their families and stuff. That's nice.
It actually was very nice.
Yeah.
The other point that Steve brought up was the bike patrol. And I said, I've said this to them as I see them out, chief. I think that our bikes are a little older. They say they work very well. But I constantly say, what about some e-bikes? And I don't mean it from the pedaling perspective. And I said this to Lieutenant Fisher and Kevin Wood. My thought is that if they then have to book it back to town for something, I mean, I'm able to ride a bike, but even if I exercise my momentum to get to where I need to go, I might not be fully capable to do the job when I get there. Maybe having that e-assistance, but then they mentioned it might be a new course, but just food for thought that if you throw two e-bikes in there for the F526 budget, I'm not gonna, not gonna yank them. So, Vice President Farrell.
I just have one more thing. But first, those bikes have been a.
Roxanne. Oh, easily, easily. John was still, John was still here when we searched guy bikes.
But I just want to, to mention about our audit. It, a very fine job, very fine job with a clean audit with no issues. And they talked about our staff tremendously well. And when you go through an audit that's concerning a federal brand and have no issues and full compliance, that, that is worth, worth celebrating.
Yes.
So, so I really would like for you to share with your staff and recognize your leadership in that department because our audit was, was really stellar.
Thank you.
Steve, thanks to Tim.
All right, number eight, mayor's comments. I'll throw it to Sarah. I'll talk to them.
I was gonna talk about the renovation plans being available for everyone to see and now we know. And I will follow up on you tomorrow.
Everybody take time, take a look at it. We really want, we're not gonna, I say this all the time, we're designing it for now, but we're probably not gonna renovate for another 50 years or so. So, I'm not gonna be here in this capacity, I can promise you that. But really, we are designing it for today and for the future. So, when you look at it, know that not every office will probably be filled, will not be filled right away. But we are cognizant of the town that we have now, as well as what we'll have in about
fifty years or so.
Love that.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, comments from the press?
I'm not press, but can I say one thing? It was based on something Shanika said about, you know, staffing, police department in particular. But I would like to say, besides the one vacant police position, we are fully staffed. And I don't think we have been in like, ten nights been here. I don't think we've ever been fully staffed.
How long have we been here? Almost 10 years?
Yeah, nine. So, it's been, it's just kind of exciting. So, hopefully we get that one filled and then we'll be, you know, up there. We do, we did hire a new public works employee and he's, he's starting tomorrow. So, yeah, that was our last one was thanks to them, please. So, feeling good. Just putting it out there.
We have a couple of new positions that are, it works.
We can get those biodegradable confetti done.
I just feel like it's stupid. But like, you know, staffing especially down here, but everywhere is really struggling. So, it just feels like really good.
Vice President Farrell, you're up.
Wait, can I say one thing?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Thank you so much for that snowball fight. My grandkids absolutely, that was the greatest thing ever. They were throwing snowballs at police officers.
Gary Bratton and our newest officer just graduated, the academy, Brandon West.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what. There was about twenty kids there that just thought that that was the greatest experience that's ever happened.
I bet he did.
And it was all around, man. It was so bad I hadn't come around and helped. Vice President, we're up.
Who's your jerk?
All the favorites say, all right, thank you. Have a good night. Mary's like, don't run away. Shanika, please, we have Wednesday.
Wednesday.